To order the our work session. Clerk would do a roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here. I make the motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Who submitted? Chris? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and go to a discussion of lots near Salvation Army site. And Noel, would you lead this discussion for us, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, and I can certainly begin the discussion. I know that Reed Craft, on behalf of the Salvation Army, had requested to come before the council to discuss this, so I'll kind of lay out the information on that, and then we can go from there. As noted, the Salvation Army has requested the city to convey lots to them, generally located east of 55 Franklin Street and west of the Salvation Army site at 89 Franklin Street. If you go to the packet of information that I handed out to you, it has a map as the last page. The two lots are in yellow along Franklin Street are the ones they are referencing. So on this map, we put city-owned properties in yellow. Privately-owned properties are outlined by white, and the red-owned properties are outlined and hashed in the red that the Salvation Army has. So the two lots that they were talking about are the two in yellow on Franklin Street. The city acquired the lots through the 657A process to eliminate blighted and vacant homes in the Franklin Street corridor. The city has had to date one project look at the site for redevelopment. I did attach the, that'll be the second-to-last page. This is a site that was built, or a plan that was put together by a private developer looking at the site for a small office-type building. That project would have had an estimated new taxable value of $400,000, paying over $14,900 a year in taxes when built. The project is not moving ahead at this time, but it's also not dead. The Salvation Army is requesting to buy the two lots from the city of Waterloo for $6,060, which is the assessed value of land for the two parcels according to the sale-of-property policy. As you can see from above, that amount would be less than the first year of taxes paid for a future building built at this site. The Salvation Army has done a great job assembling their campus, and the city has previously vacated and sold land to them to help in this purpose. And I did put an asterisk there at the corner of Mullen and Almond and Logan intersection, where the city previously vacated some land there, where that orange asterisk is, so that the Salvation Army could add some parking out front. So again, we have worked in great partnership with the Salvation Army in the past. In terms of land use for the area and planning for city development and redevelopment, you'll oftentimes hear the phrase "the highest and best used." Much like real estate, it's all about location, location, location. And again, what we're looking at is not only the immediate impacts, immediate projects, but the future land use and long-term redevelopment and improvement of areas when we're doing planning efforts. City Waterloo continues to see great progress in the transformation of the Franklin Street corridor with the construction of the Salvation Army's men's shelter in 2004, East Side Use Furniture in 2004. These are all, a lot of these are on the map. The Rose of Waterloo Assisted Living Facility in 2006, the Earth Beauty Supply Strip Mall in 2013, the CVS Pharmacy being built in 2014, the renovated KWWL Office Building in 2016, and then the All-In Grocers is planned for construction this spring in 2018. This major corridor within the community is a growing source of new development, new job creation, and a new facelift along this area of the community. The city Waterloo and Salvation Army need to continue to work in partnership for the redevelopment of this area. The Salvation Army is a highly important partner in this area, and as you can see from the map, has a good amount of land for future parking expansion, campus redevelopment, with some more opportunities along Argyle Street for more land development as well. It is staff's opinion that a commercial focus should be employed for the lots abutting Franklin Street, and a partnered approach to acquiring more land along Argyle Street should continue to help the Salvation Army campus grow. Privately-owned commercial lots on Franklin would need the on-street visibility and exposure for success, whereas the Salvation Army is a destination-type location that does not need more added visibility than they already have at the Franklin Street and Highway 63 intersection. Just as a reference, again, going back to the building lot layout, this office building at 5,000 square feet is actually shown on the two city lots in yellow, and then there is a Salvation Army lot in red just to the left of those as this was laid out to make this proposal work. It is staff's request to continue to work with the Salvation Army on a proposal that would allow the city to gain that parcel, transfer ownership of the lot that we have along Argyle Street, and work with the Salvation Army on future Argyle acquisitions. In summary, the city of Waterloo thanks the Salvation Army for their current, past, and future partnerships, programs, and investments in the city of Waterloo and its citizenry. We hope to continue to work with them to create a growing and vibrant campus on and around their current site at 89 Franklin Street, with the idea that the highest and best use of land will include a campus of them and others to truly redevelop this area. As we are witnessing and beginning in the Walnut neighborhood nearby, it takes many partners to truly revitalize an area, and in this area, as part of the overall Franklin Street corridor, we will continue to see new project potential, and we need to be ready to make that happen.
Any questions of Noel right now? Hear from Mr. Craft, do you want to make a statement?
Yes, thank you. I'm Reed Craft, 912 Kobe. Good evening, members of council. I've been on the Salvation Army Advisor Board for nearly 40 years, so I go back to when Major Thomas was there, and he visualized a campus that included that entire triangular block. You may think that's an awful lot of land, but he thought playgrounds, parking lots, or whatever the Salvation Army might need to expand, the logical expansion would be, of course, to the west. The highway's on the east, and the highway took some land off of that side of our property. So... I don't think it makes any difference whether it's on Argyle or on Franklin. The Salvation Army has purchased some of these lots, a lot of them through the county when they used to sell on the tax sale. One of the lots, half a lot 33, we got for $50, and the other half we got for $25. And that was back in the 80s, late 80s and 90s. So this has been going on for a long time. And the idea that the intersection is a great commercial area is fine, and I'm all for commercial development. And I suppose a developer, private or public, would like to look down the street and see a whole row of wonderful properties paying property tax. But that's not my vision of a street. I think there has to be some properties that don't pay property tax, some churches, some clubs, Elks Club, et cetera. So I don't know that we can plan on developing everything on Franklin Street as property tax, paying properties. I think it's to the benefit of the city for the Salvation Army to be able to expand on these lots. We do need parking. You might go by the Salvation Army 10 times and not see a parking problem, but when there's feeding program going on, there is parking problems. And when there's a funeral, a lot of times there's parking problems. So we don't have any project right now, nothing that we're going to do immediately, but there's things we think about in the future, and expanded parking is one, and a shelter is another one. So I would encourage you to sell us these two lots for whatever your policy is on assessed value. I think that Lot 18 is probably still assessed based on the house that was on it. Assessors probably haven't adjusted it. Otherwise, there wouldn't be that much difference between the two lots. So if you have any questions, we have Major Puff and Mrs. Puff here, two majors to answer to.
Anyone have questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Craft, one of the questions that I have is, I heard Noel say that 2004 was when the one building was put up. Has there been any other development since the 2004 development as far as the building that was put up? From the Salvation Army, I mean.
I don't know what building, the...
Transition Shelter.
Oh, the transition shelter was 2004, yeah. It's back on Argyle. There again, we had purchased those lots not knowing that we were going to do a shelter, but for the purpose of possible expansion. And I think there's five or six lots there that was just perfect for the men's shelter. But the Salvation Army Corps Headquarters was put up in 1991. The addition, the original part was 1961.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is 2004 was the last actual development that Salvation Army did.
Well, yeah, we did put a large metal warehouse in there, and I don't know whether that was a few years before that or a few years after.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Craft, do you have any immediate plans? I understand, I love Major Thomas, thought he was a terrific man, and he had a lot of vision, but other than his vision, do you have any specific plans for the use of this property?
There's nothing that we've drawn any plans on, nothing that we've hired any consultants for, but we realize that there is an overflow. Parking fills up, the available parking at times, and...
There is some additional land that you own that could be used for parking, is there not?
Yeah, Lot 12, that we purchased from the city four, five, six years ago.
So what's the reason for the immediate need to get the land now?
Well, if you put a office building, or a house, or anything on those two lots, it prevents any expansion for 50 years, or we'd have to pay a tremendous amount of money to do the expansion.
Do you, there appears, and I don't know what's on these lots that you own, you have a shelter, you have, you said a building, a stick building?
Backing up to Major Thomas, what he said and what the advisory board agreed to at that time was, we weren't going to buy homes that people lived in and tear them down. We, some of them were getting old, and we'd wait until the lots became vacant. The men's shelter, which started out as transitional housing, is on Lot 34, 33, 32, and then the parking is on 27.
What we have, the lots aren't numbered, so that doesn't really help me.
Well, it's a T-shaped area.
Is he talking about this one down here?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that a shelter? Okay, but they own all these other additional lots?
Yeah, there's two lots towards the corner, and then right on that point, that Lot 31, we bought that when it became available through county tax sale, and homeowner that lives next to it talked to us about buying it, and we said, just, if you'll mow it, you can use it. We have no particular need for it right now, but we were in the process of buying anything that became available.
Do other council members have questions?
Yeah, Reed, this looks like at some point in time you want to have this be the Salvation Army campus, almost this entire triangular area. That's what was envisioned at some time ago, it looks like, correct?
Yes.
And you're, it looks like you're about three-quarters of the way there, or maybe even more with the acquisition of the lots that are outlined in yellow, is that correct?
I don't have anything outlined in yellow, but is that the private?
On our map, it's the ones that Noel was speaking to that we're here to talk about.
Yeah, the private.
The city still owns.
The private property.
Correct, yeah. And are the other properties there, you're looking at eventually acquiring them with a goal at some point in time to have a Salvation Army campus here in this triangular area, it sounds like, correct?
Yeah, that was Major Thomas's vision. He thought about a playground.
Okay.
And in fact, at one time, there was some kind of federal funds for playground equipment and through urban renewal, and then that got next because of the Salvation Army being somewhat religious as well as charitable.
So it sounds like acquiring this property at this point in time fits into you guys' vision, and it also would be something that if was, be turned down and some private entity would buy it, it would really mess up the whole works and the whole plan that you got here, especially given the fact that you, at this point in time, Salvation Army has probably 75% of that triangle right now anyway.
Yeah, we had the opportunity to purchase a house on Argyle. You see where the two real small lots are?
Right.
The one to the right was vacant and was for sale, and we had no need for a house, and we didn't want to pay the cost of tearing it down, and they fixed it back up, and people are living in it. So we, I don't know, it was $30,000 or $35,000 or something. We had, that's not what we want to do. We were just buying what became available as it became vacant.
But I sense, Mr. Reed, that you really want to buy it to stop commercial development from going there, while you have no immediate plan for the land's use?
I guess you could put it, you could put it that way, or you could put it so that it is available when we need it, which we think we probably will. The idea of a shelter is even farther in the future, but it's another idea that we've been floating around.
Anyone else have questions?
Well, the only thing, it looks like in the plan that Noel had talked about on the third page here, Mr. Craft, is that there is some thinking about that, and goes so far as to include use of detention ponds for water runoff and that, so there is some planning that's going into this and acquiring these two lots.
I think that was for the commercial development though, wasn't it?
But it looks like if you're going to do something, you're going to have, if you're going to put any buildings or anything on there, you would probably have to do something like that too, put detention ponds in, if you were going to pave it or anything like that in that area there.
Yes, in fact, the men's shelter has a detention pond.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Anderson, is there action that you're asking us to take at this point, or is this just to get Mr. Craft's input?
No, I mean, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, Reed had asked for an audience with the council. It is staff's position that we should not do anything at this time because there's no specific projects to move ahead with. We believe it's in the city's best interest to leave it open for opportunities as they may come, so we're not requesting any action at this time.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Noel, are you aware of what the cost is for the city to maintain these lots on a yearly basis?
I would imagine probably about $2,000. You know, perhaps moving forward, it would be beneficial if the Salvation Army would share with the city council or staff, at least to begin continued discussions, their master planning of their current uses of their buildings, of their land, and what they foresee coming, and if there's any anticipated timelines. Because obviously you can see, by the city selling this land and losing it, we'd be losing the ability to gain tax base on it any time in the future.
I really, I'm personally hesitant on selling the land to Salvation Army when you have no immediate plan for it. Neither side does, you know, there's a possibility of commercial. I think when the time comes that the city has an offer, maybe at that point is when we decide whether to go ahead with the commercial development or sell it to Salvation Army. I just don't sense any urgency right now, unless the other council members disagree.
Madam Chairperson, the only thing that's along the lines of, you know, maintenance, I mean, it's a gain for us in that respect that we aren't responsible for maintaining.
But I see that as being a prime development area, too.
Well, but when you consider, Madam Chairperson, that everything around it is Salvation Army property, and Salvation Army is looking at acquiring it for their campus, I see a longer-range goal, Madam Chairperson.
Maybe if they saw their master plan, if there is a master plan, that would be helpful. Because there's a lot of impediments right now from them, there's a lot of property they don't own, or houses they need to take down.
I would concur with Mr. Morrissey. I think it's a great cost savings, a great way to save $2,000.
If I may, share a part of our master plan. The properties on the east side of Logan Avenue on your flat here, I was telling Noel that those two buildings are either going to be torn down or sold. So that could be a commercial development, or Salvation Army might choose to keep it. We don't particularly like to think of parking across the street from the building, but if there's a great economic development project, put it on that parcel, and we'll stay on the triangle.
Is there a motion or any indication, what anyone wants?
There's no, there's no action on the agenda. It's mostly just informational at this point.
For the future, what they want to do. At the very least, I would suggest you come to us with a master plan when you have that developed, but if somebody else has a suggestion that we can pass along to Mr. Craft, that'd be great.
Well, we have plans, it just isn't a formal master plan, but I would suggest and request that you sell the property.
And Madam Chairperson, I'd be one person that'd be in favor of that to Salvation Army's at this point, given their, the ownership they have in that area. I mean, it's predominantly their, their triangle, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I just don't know why we'd sell it at this point when they have no plan for it, we have no plan for it. But there is the potential of commercial development, so I...
Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
Just in the interest of time, I know we have to get into our financial report and those things. For me, this is something that I'd really like to think about some more from a standpoint of, I understand the Salvation Army's position, I understand the city's position, and it's just a matter of, for me, I'd really like to just...
Like to think about it?
Yes.
And I agree with you, and I personally would like to see a master plan as to what's going to happen in that area. Mrs. Klein?
I agree. I think we need to think about it. I think we don't want to jump the gun, because, you know, we need all the tax input we can get, and if that's available, that's great, you know, if it turns out it isn't...
When you think about it then?
Yeah, nothing is harmed by waiting.
Right.
And having said that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Craft, for coming. We appreciate it, we'll think about it, and when you've got that master plan ready, why don't you let us know? How's that sound? Okay. And for Finance Committee, I'm going to call to order the Finance Committee. The roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of March 5, 2018, as proposed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I need a motion for the travel request, please.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following travel requests. First one was officers Walter and Bovee for the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, from April 24th to 26th of this year, with the amount not to exceed $224. And the second is Rudy Jones, Community Development Director, for the Cedar Valley Coalition trip to Washington DC, April 23rd through 25th of this year, with amount not to exceed $1,899. The final one is Lieutenant Lee and Lieutenant Jensen for the blue card subscription access for one year, and it's online, no travel time required or expense there, amount not to exceed $770.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Need a motion then for the pre-authorization to expend over $1,000?
Madam Chairperson, pre-authorization to expend over $1,000 for the airport, estimated at $1,248.48 to replace dated and worn carpet squares in the TSA offices, which are located on the second floor of the airport passenger terminal building. Building maintenance for $31,119 to repack the pool heaters, for raypack pool heaters for Burns Pool. Fire department, $1,920.47 for parts for the SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus repair. Garage, $7,800.45 plus $250 shipping handling for the transmission for the BO8 2004 M2 freight liner. Garage, $1,550 plus $100 shipping handling for a reversible engine fan drive with automatic adjustable timer for a John Deere loader. Plan and zoning, $2,200 for inspection of 807, 809 to 811 East Fourth Street. Police department, $17,108.25. Purchased three replacement switches for computer server with a three-year maintenance agreement. Sanitation, $2,703.26 plus $150 shipping handling. For filters, belts, lacing kit for number 151N04 grinder used at the yard waste site. Sanitation, $7,162.38 plus $250 shipping handling for the purchase of a side conveyor valve, support roller, conveyor belt, rubber and protection plates for the 2012 number 155N03 screener. Sanitation, $4,508.30 plus $150 shipping handling to purchase a turbo GP core gasket bolt seals for grinder number 151N04 used at the yard waste site. Sanitation, $2,162.51 plus $100 shipping handling for nozzle assembly and core for loader A01.
Second.
Good job. Did you have a glass of water to help you?
I might need one, though.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes.
Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. And then, as contained in the accounts payable invoice report dated March 12, 2018, that that report be received, placed on file, approved, and forwarded to the full council in the amount of $1,156,234.76.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please do the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, when we do our moment of silence this evening, I would ask that you keep your heart and minds prepared for the Schmidt family, so not going to go in details about personal situations, but if you would keep your hearts and minds and thoughts for them, that'll be great. So please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by Keith Caspary, Airport Director.
Please join me in the pledge. (Inaudible) from the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the March 5, 2018 regular session, and the minutes of the March 8, 2008 special session.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. This is the time in the evening for oral presentations. Is your opportunity to talk to the council about non-agenda-related ideas, I mean, conversations, or whatever is on your hearts and minds that's not part of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you... and let us know what you're thinking about. All right, and I'll just say for the, the portion on number 13, for the budget with the total tax levy rate that changed slightly, so if you want to have some conversation at that time, you can with regards to the budget. Yes, sir?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Watching the news this week in various places, one of the things that Des Moines did here in the last couple of weeks, they voted down a sales tax option, one cent. Some of the communities needed, some of them didn't. So, there is a way of slowing things down. Do we need to necessarily keep going on the path of maybe running, when we could slow this down and string some of these projects out a little bit and save us a little bit of bucks? And, you know, maybe that way we could accumulate a little bit more cash for some of our projects. Thank you.
All right, next.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me spout off for a few minutes. My wife and I, we, we've lived in Waterloo for 45 years.
Sir, can I get your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Robert Oberbrockling.
Thank you.
My address is Bridges Senior Living, and I watch some of the traffic on 63 try to cross over town, cross town, and it's pretty much up to the individual when he gets here, or she, to get across town from north to south, or south to north. So, I tried to drive across the city, knowing it a little bit, and the first thing I did was run into a total blockade on First Street down here. No way to turn. You can turn two ways, either to go over to Mullen, or turn right, go over to Fourth Street. Well, I went over to Fourth Street and tried to go out. I waited 25 minutes for a train, and I thought, I wonder, because I wanted to come in from the north side, to see how, how the the road was to run through, the, the, the the road to go through from south to north, or north to south. But anyway, getting back to the blockades, there's no way that, there's no indication of any arrows of which way to go through Waterloo. And since I live at Bridges, I was watching from the window, and the opening morning on Monday, there was two semis that pulled down to the First Street Bridge and stopped, didn't know where to go. And it was blocked, says road closed. So, I finally, they finally turned left, went over to Mullen, and I guess crossed. And lo and behold, they get over to Franklin Street, like they're going north on 63, and here there's a big blockade there, road closed. No arrows to follow a detour through our town. And I thought, I wonder what kind of a reputation we have when we can't direct traffic when we block off a major highway through here? Isn't there somebody that can come up with a, a few arrows to indicate how to get through Waterloo? Instead, instead of letting them guess? And I, I suppose that 18-wheelers know their way around Waterloo, so they don't come through here. But anyway, you folks or your street department, somebody ought to know how to put a few arrows up and direct traffic through Waterloo. Can you imagine the out-of-town people, the comments that are made after they try to get north to south, or south to north, with no indication of how to get through town? So, that's all I have. Somebody should do something about that, I think.
Yeah, you just, you just got me to thinking too, for, well, thank you for your comments. You just got me thinking about doing some more informational things in different places, and non-traditional places that we did, such as utilizing KWWL, utilizing a little bit more of the courier, putting up stuff in City Hall, and just trying to do another campaign, if we can call it that, on trying to get folks directed. So, thank you, thank you so much for the idea.
Needs some direction through town.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and viewing audience. Hi, this is Bruce W. Caser, CRT Apartments, Florida, Iowa. I'm here to ask for your input, please, still, again, for input on ADA complaints issues. If anybody has any problems at all, or any wants to share some good news, too, please get ahold of me, and we'll work together, we'll pray, and try to seek adequate solutions. Thank you kindly for my time, and God bless you.
All right, you too. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve and help people. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments?
Good evening, Todd Oberdahl, 124 Amity Drive. We have an item on the, the agenda tonight. I don't, I know there'll be time to speak to that at, at that time, but leading, leading up to that, I would like to just talk about some things that happened last week and some things before then. The city council has the responsibility to determine the budget and determine the levy rate. It is the city council's job. Last week, it was, we were informed in the public session that there wasn't a deal done, that it would revert back to the previous year. Apparently, that wasn't true. I would like to say that this is a cautionary tale for us to giving blind faith and blind acceptance into the words of the city staff, because sometimes they can be incorrect. I believe that last week, or excuse me, on Thursday...
Does this have anything to do with the budget conversation coming up a little bit later?
No.
Because if you are dissatisfied with that, that would be the appropriate time.
No, I'm not. I am, what I, what I'm saying is, what I'm dissatisfied with is the repeated assertion that comes from the dais that we need to trust city staff. It is our job to question, it is the city council's job to question. It was just a little over a year ago, we had an instance with the recycling that happened, where it was city staff's determination that it was a good idea to send out two sets of trucks to pick up two sets of bins and take them both to the landfill. That was not a wise use of city funds. That certainly was a place where we could have, we could have cut. It didn't come out for months later. There is also a, a problem with the wastewater plant. And as was mentioned on February 5th by Councilwoman Klein about a picture that is circulating around of sludge going straight into the river. And questions were asked at that time, and questions have been asked since then, about how that sludge got there, and how the city was taking in waste from another city. And were we being compensated for that? And what was the compensation rate for that? As I'm looking at the budget that was submitted last week, I see under the Waste Pollution Control Plant, I've got a revenue of $11,920,565 for fiscal year 18, and that exact same amount is projected for fiscal year 2019. Are we expecting to get that same amount of revenue for the services of disposing of outside-town waste at the, at the city plant? Or is it not accounted for? Or did we not receive anything for that? My question is, how much does it cost to process a 6,000-gallon truck worth of waste? And where is that accounted for on here, be that number 17 trucks or 50 trucks? That is my question I have, and I'd like an answer. Thank you.
Did the, did the company that brought in the waste, did, did they pay for the waste they brought in? I want to show me the dress. I've addressed it very... Like, yeah, just, um, because he was asserting that could potentially have not been a payment for that. And then, lastly, the, the revenue... All right. Oh, is it on mic? Thank you, Mr. Oberdahl. Did they pay for it?
Yes, they did.
All right. Mrs. Weidner, and address the revenue portion where it went.
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. So, we were not anticipating receiving that revenue in 18. So, that's why you don't see it in the 18 budgeted revenue. We're not anticipating receiving anything like that in 19, so that's why you don't see it in the 19 revenue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time?
Okay, I make a motion to close the hearing, receive and place on file. All comments made.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, did you have any, any comments now that the portion is closed?
We're on the consent agenda now?
Uh, we're at oral presentations.
We just did a motion to receive and file.
Receive and file, but I didn't close it yet.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The oral presentation is closed.
Okay, I make a motion to receive, place on file, the consent agenda. Add to 1A the amount of $1,156,234.76.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made with the second for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess I just have some questions. I'm a little bit confused on what item 1B23 is. And that, I know that is my predecessor, Mr. Welper, but I guess I don't understand why, why are we bonding something for him?
Which one? One?
It'd be number two, it'd be number three.
So, so would you, so...
B3.
Just make a, so you want to request that that...
No, I don't want it separately. I just want, I just want some explanation on it. I don't understand why we're...
Let's discuss it separately.
Okay.
Let's just get, discuss it separately so that it stands apart, and then we'll go from there. So, what, what number is that?
That would be, that would be number three, B3.
It is...
1B3.
B23. No, B3.
No, B, just B3. And I don't have any issues with it. I just want some explanation, clarification on it.
So, just to try to start a consistent practice with consent agenda, we'll separate that one. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Not to be difficult, which evidently I am, but if we don't, if somebody does not want to take that or extract it from the consent agenda, they don't have to. But on a consent agenda, if you have questions, I think, wouldn't it be perfectly okay just to ask questions without having to extract it?
As long as they don't want a separate vote on it.
Right.
Well, the agenda states that underneath consent agenda, the following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
Correct. Yes. But I, all I'm saying is, I didn't hear...
But without discussion is what it says.
If you want separate discussion...
So, you of all people?
Mr. Morrissey, follow the rules.
Try to get you a, a consistent process and relieve tensions from the... So, so, because I just don't want it to change.
Would you like to withdraw?
Nah, you just withdraw, why you just take it?
Clarification on what, on what exactly it is. I guess I'm, I'm not really following.
So, you have a point of order for...
Why, why we're doing that. I mean, if, I don't know, Matt could give an explanation, or who does that, or...
So, can, so we can start doing things this way.
Yeah, let's pull it off.
Yeah, we'll just pull it off. I'm just trying to, so next time, when there's something we disagree about, we won't.
Fair enough.
We know that we have to.
We'll move it to the side.
We don't want to set a precedent.
So, or correct one. All right, so, so we have those, so we have those items. You want that pulled to the side. Matt?
Should we approve the consent agenda?
You need to do your roll call on the consent agenda and then take that up separately.
Okay, so we're going to do a roll call on the consent agenda, and we'll take that one separately to get the questions answered. So, if that's all the items that you want questions about, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr., whoops, sorry, Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
All right. Matt?
Matt Mahler with the Water Works. It's part of the, every member of the Board of Trustees is bonded with a $5,000 bond. It's paid for by the Water Works, and then we receive and file it, and then we forward it to the city for receiving and filing. So, it's part of them making, as, as making decisions for the Water Works, they have a financial liability, so it covers that for anybody who would file a claim against them.
Protects.
It protects the city.
I make a motion to approve number three under the consent agenda.
A motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
We can do, okay. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file approved publication and notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 1819 complaint moving with com, complaint snow removal contract.
Second. The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving plan specification, form a contract, et cetera.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to code enforcement for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The estimate for the project was $50,000, and each bid has a couple different options that they could bid on. First bidder was R&amp;D Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Bid amount for option A was $1,500, option B, $1,450, C, $30, D, $42, E, $25. Second bidder was Wilson Custom Trees of Cresco, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Option A was $1,496, B, $1,382, C, $30, D, $40, and E, $30. Third bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount for option A was $1,249.49, B, $1,249.49, C, $24.49, D, $39.89, and E, $24.49.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number three is a motion to receive and file proof of, file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and it's for the purchase of one 2009 autom, 2019, excuse me, automated side-load garbage truck.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there any, yes, there is. All right, if there's anyone else that would like to be heard on this items with questions or comments, you can step forward afterwards.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. The first question I have is that, do we need a new truck? Something wrong with the old ones? They can't be fixed? Anyone?
All right, are those all your questions, sir?
Well, that might create another question, but...
We're not going to go back and forth. We're going to respect every... We're not gonna go back and forth, we're gonna respect everything you say today.
This is a discussion, isn't it, Mr. Mayor?
It, 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 it is, it is, um, your opportunity to ask questions, um.
And I'm waiting for an answer, so.
All right, well, that concludes your question, so Sandy? I'm running the flow of this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Just so you know.
I'm just getting more aggressive.
Well, you get more aggressive, and you get too aggressive, and you are.
Then you're gonna kick me out, okay, thank you, sir.
I'm not gonna kick you out, I'm just going to, um, try to continue to work with you, Mr. Dryer, like I have been.
Okay.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director, um, yes, we're on a rotation of every year, we purchase a new garbage truck. The old one of the five will be sent down into the other part that does all the recycling and the yard waste, that truck, the oldest truck will be either sold on Purple Wave or, um, some other way, yes, after, after those trucks have been used for so many years, um, the rate to repair them is more than what the truck is worth. So we're just on a rotation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dryer. Is there anyone else that would like to have comments about, um, uh, number, what number we are, number three?
Number three.
Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, all right, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Resolution confirming approval of specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is this, um, Fund Five Twenty-Five Fifteen dash, um, five thousand four hundred, is this the same fund that code enforcement salaries and benefits are paid out of?
Sanitation, if you wanna, somebody wanna.
Michelle Whedon, Chief Financial Officer, it's the same fund, but it's not the same activity, so code enforcement is funded with garbage fees, so is garbage collection, this would be coded to the garbage collection activity, which is Activity Fifty-four Hundred, code enforcement is Activity Fifty-One Twenty-Five.
So would it be possible to move these funds to hire a new code enforcement officer?
It would, but we might have difficulty with picking up garbage, we have, we worked very hard to structure a truck replacement plan so that we could keep fees at a level amount and replace one a year, we don't have to go into debt, we save taxpayers or fee payers all that interest, so it, it could create other issues if we do that, but you could choose to do that.
I mean, what, or, or, I mean, but what would probably help is, we're talking about a side-load garbage truck, sit down and let's talk about it outside of this particular one, and if that's the wishes of the council to hire another code enforcement or take up the other one to full-time, um, I mean, I'm open to that conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a good discussion moving forward after what we heard during budget discussions because, um, the code enforcement position, now that it's in Fi- Fund Five Twenty-Five, it would not affect, um, Fund Zero One Zero, which is the general fund, and I have continually heard that the sanitation fund is healthy and doing well, so maybe that's a discussion we need to have later on down the road.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, resolution authorizing to proceed?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Resolution approving award of bid to Cedar Rapids Truck Center.
Fi- uh, receive, file, and.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to receive, file, and instructs the city clerk to read bids.
Checking.
The motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, yeah, it's kinda trapped in between the resolutions.
The estimate is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, our first bidder was Cedar Rapids Truck Center Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Their bid amount for a truck with triple pump was two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, without a triple pump is two hundred and twenty, or, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, sixty-seven dollars. Second bidder was Harrison Truck Centers of Marshall, Minnesota, their bid for one with a triple pump is two hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, without is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Schumpf.
Mr. Mayor, resolution approving award of bid to Cedar Rapids Trunks, Truck Center, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars, including five-year warranty and triple pump.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second.
Yes, sir. Uh, Kelly, could you repeat that dollar amount that, for some reason, I thought that they were different?
For which one?
For the one that was awarded the bid.
From Cedar Rapids.
Uh. They are, excellent catch, Pat.
Yeah. It might have been a typo, let me look at the attachment. Thank you for catching that.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, uh, come up?
I thought it was the warranty.
Oh.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director, um, it is, um, a few thousand dollars more because we are purchasing a five-year warranty on that, um, which will really, really make a difference.
Oh, so including five-year?
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
All right, thank you, number four, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Amos, like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that is for Fifth and Sixth Streets syst- syst- systemic traffic systems improvements, say that five times fast, that motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open, is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
Good evening, uh, David Deeds, nine twenty-two Mulberry, I realize you have, uh, a lot of people waiting for, perhaps was viewed as a bigger issue today, but unfortunately, this is the day of the public hearing for this topic, so here I am, um. It's ironic that two years ago today, almost today, actually, we had a conversation in front of this very council about whether this was the right plan for Fifth and Sixth Streets, and whether we should be more forward-looking in our approach to Fifth and Sixth Streets. Uh, unfortunately, uh, those conversations did not go anywhere, uh, those conversations, uh, essentially, nothing happened. Now, uh, what I'm here to ask you for tonight is not to vote against this resolution, it is what it is. Um, uh, uh, what I am gonna point out is that I do appreciate that staff was able to get the state to pay for our deferred maintenance, which is essentially what this is. What I would like you to consider for the future is to open a dialogue with downtown constituents when it comes to improvements to downtown infrastructure. That has not happened to date, and did not happen with this project either. While many would say this is purely about safety, I would tend to disagree, it's, uh, really about what kind of city we're building for the people who will live here ten, twenty, thirty years after this. Uh, just a little side note, uh, the justification for this particular grant application was is that we wanna stop people from turning left out of the wrong lane. Now, if we just pause for a moment and think about, why would someone turn left out of the wrong lane? It's because they believe they're on a two-way street, how about we quit fighting it and just give them a two-way street? Now, uh, there are other benefits to two-way streets, and there is evidence that traffic safety is actually improved on two-way streets. Uh, crime is reduced, I'll give you some handout here in just a moment, property values go up, which is particularly relevant given our conversations this week and last week and the previous week and many weeks ahead, I'm sure. Uh, it does not fix everything, but I would certainly welcome a dialogue with downtown stakeholders between the traffic department, um, and engineering departments to talk about how we go about building our city for the future, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone?
Yvonne Balch at five two seven East Park, um, I actually was not gonna speak about this, I actually didn't even know.
If you can speak into that.
I didn't even know that.
There you go.
Guys, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I didn't know that that, what Dave just talked about was even on the agenda, but, uh, I have pretty strong, strong feelings about this, this topic as well as someone who's lived downtown for the last seven years. There was a pool tournament in, in town this past weekend, my wife and I were heading, heading out to San Martin on Fifth, heading west, um, obviously, um, and as we're coming across the bridge, there was a car heading the other way. I mean, so when you have, when you get people in town that are not from the area, yeah, I mean, they're, they're taking a right or a left where, where they're not supposed to because they're just not, you know, they're just not familiar with, uh, with the area, so, yeah, so that's, that's one reason to have two-way streets downtown. Another reason is, we, I mean, if we want development downtown, okay, we need to slow down traffic, okay? If we want more pedestrian, uh, traffic, I mean, if we want even more development, more businesses to go on these, on these roads, we need to slow down traffic. Um, um, it'll, uh, it, it'll encourage, if you can get to one place on a, on a one-way street, what is now a one-way street from two ways, I mean, if you, if you make it more accessible by switching to a two-way, um, I mean, that's, that's gonna be, um, a positive, so we absolutely need to look at making Fifth and Sixth two ways, I mean, it's just the right thing to do. We just don't have enough traffic for those roads to be four lanes, it just doesn't make any sense, so that's all I have on that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this particular item? Going a second? Yes, sir.
Wayne Ayler's twelve oh five and a half Bishop Street, I'm here to talk about code enforcement as you brought it up today, and.
It's, um, not right now, this is, uh, we, um, on the, we're on Fifth and Si- Fifth and Sixth Street, um, traffic safety improvement.
You didn't ask the public to comment when you brought it up, so I just waited.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, yeah, that was in regards to a, um, um, the, the garbage side loader, and it was a question about where the money actually came from.
Well, I'm talking about the garbage on my driveway that I repeatedly brought up time after time, code enforcement, don't go out and pick it up, I pick it up, I've told you, I went to your office.
And I think what Mr.
Same old thing, garbage, 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 I even took some to the city attorney, you know what he said, sue us.
And.
So I maintain that road, pick it up, garbage, 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 dead end road.
And, um, yeah, Mr. Schimpf was saying maybe we need to fill the other part of that position and make it a full-time, but that was then, this is now, and we're talking about Fifth and Sixth Street, um, traffic safety improvement, so is there anyone else with comments about that particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment on that, please.
Yours will come, council comes after, after that part, so we're just trying to close the public hearing and then we'll move on to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, um, Sandy, you wanna talk about this project a little bit? And then we'll come right to you, Mr. Jacobs.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director, um, this is a project that we have gotten a grant on from the state.
Yeah, you gotta speak into the mic.
Okay, this will in turn, um, add a mast arm pole at every intersection, we're going on Fifth and Sixth Street from Washington, northbound Washington to Mulberry, um, we'll have new controllers, new timing, um, new, um, signage, street markings. Um, we will also have cameras, monitoring cameras at each intersection, we plan on having five at each intersection, four pointing every single way, one pointing straight down. If it is the council's request to do a study on making this two-way, um, this possibly could be done, we'd have to bring consultants in and do a complete study on that. And also, um, the equipment that we have now, or that we're purchasing now if this is passed, can be used the same on a two-way. So it's, this is just big traffic improvement for the downtown area.
And you're also connecting fiber.
We are, we will be running fiber along there too, and hopefully connecting to some other city buildings in the downtown area.
So, uh, Mr. Jacobs had a question first.
I just have a comment and a question, Mr. Mayor, uh, a comment would be, I would ask that anyone that comes to the podium would show respect for our mayor. The comment, question I have on this is I like some of the things that we're doing with this, and I love the grant part, but, um, I guess I would li- uh, Mr. Deeds brought up a great point, and it does document in here that there is an opportunity possibly, if you have a two-way street to increase property values, so I would really like to see a task force, or down the road, if we get one tra- task force that's gonna complete here, maybe we could add to the next round a study on two-way streets and how that might increase our property values downtown.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, um, would doing this project now in any way hinder us in the future from going two ways on Fifth and Sixth? You wouldn't preclude it or hurt it, right?
No, once a study is done, if, if it turns out that that would be more profitable for the city, then we would go two-way, if not, it could, but you have to remember that one-way start clear at the six corners for Fifth and Sixth Street.
So this is, um, when, when Mr. Deeds, when he mentioned, uh, a study, this is a little bit more, a little bit more of a larger project to do that study.
Can we do the study as part of this?
No, this grant is specifically for this, but the, the infrastructure that's put in place, the, the, the traffic camera adaptive systems can still be used.
For two-way.
For two-way as well, but I think what we're talking about, and he did come a couple years ago to try to take a look at the downtown corridor, see if, um, two lanes would, you know, slow down the traffic, better for business, and he is correct, um, it, nothing pursued from that, but that could be one of our future task forces coming up to kinda take a look at that and partner, uh, with Main Street and some of the downtown property owners too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I would be highly in favor of making Fifth and Stri- Sixth two-way streets, and, um, I've always been an advocate for that, and I wholeheartedly agree with what Mr. Deeds said, and I'm glad to see that Mr. Jacobs is on board with that too, and I think I've heard Mr. Morrissey maybe say that once or twice before, so.
I think, I think the careful thing to do is to go ahead and do the study.
Sure.
Like was mentioned, because there may be some parameters that we didn't even see, and you have to remember you're going all the way up to six corners, and that's a real funky intersection, which could be a roundabout. But, but, you know, think, you know, think about the intricacies of, of that particular area, and then the splitting off of the blocks in between there, and we also have a school zone there as well, so maybe this will help slow down traffic for the schools, but I think we need to take careful consideration, and if this is the direction that the council so chooses to take a look at that option, then we can, we can absolutely visit that.
If, if there was something that came up for a study, I would be in favor of doing the study, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
No, go ahead, Bruce. Uh, just to clarify, I didn't say I was in favor of it, I just, I would, I, uh, just think it would be prudent to follow Mr. Deeds', uh, lead and, uh, just create a, a task force to study the, the, um, option of doing that, so.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one, one of the things that has been missing in, uh, the discussion here is the historical significance of some of the properties that are being lost. I mean, anytime that you go down Fifth Street and you're back, uh, you're driving down Fifth Street, and behind you, you're looking at Mount Mariah, that beautiful, uh, uh, structure that we got in Waterloo, a, a two-way street would do nothing but enhance, that is a, a, a sight focal for anybody traveling that street, and it's, it's a waste of that beauty that Waterloo has by having that a one-way street with that in our rear. And I, I would hope that the study gets started really soon, I mean, I, I was in favor of this project and came on board rather, uh, belatedly, uh, as Mr. Deeds has been very good about reminding me every now and then, so, uh, uh, but I would be totally in favor of, uh, a two, two-way study going forward for sure.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I wanna add my voice to that, I think it's a great idea, roundabout and all, um.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm just teasing.
Hold on. Slow down.
I also think going forward, let's get everybody on board before we get to voting on things. Let's, you know, more inclusion.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so, uh, we have heard the will of the council, so we will, um, we will definitely, right now, um, one, one part of what has been talked about that's kinda missing, the, um, the traffic adaptive system, so, whether it's one-way or two-way, I think, uh, the science of this particular project is going to be one that's really impressive, uh, moving forward. One of our task forces, um, that council is working with, I think Councilman Amos and, uh, Councilman Shimp, um, set on and start to see some of the beginning parts of what this entire infrastructure is going to look like, the ability to be able to have our system be able to interpret traffic counts and then make adjustments, so when you're going a certain way, and you're like, man, did I just, did this just change on me right now? And you're sitting there, but this will be, this considering in our local area, um, one of the most, um, technologically advanced systems when we get to that point, but I think the conversations that you all mentioned about seeing how we can go maybe from a one-way to a two-way, I think it's relevant time to start taking a look at that option, but this is a great project right now. Um, so we had a motion and a second. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, let's do five, six, and seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number five is a resolution amending the fee schedule as approved by the Airport Board to increase fees at the Waterloo Regional Airport beginning on July first, 2018, and number six is a resolution approving temporary easement agreements with Casey's Marketing Company in the amount of one million, oh, excuse me, one thousand two hundred forty-six dollars, thirty-six cents. Pebble Hill LLC in the amount of one thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Larry Jones and Richard Flynn in the amount of zero dollars donated, and Robert P. Denny in the amount of zero dollars also donated in conjunction with the University Avenue Reconstruction Phase One project, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents. Number seven is a resolution approving award of contract to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa, in the amount of eight million, seven hundred nine thousand, seventy-eight dollars, eighty-nine cents, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the Fifth and Sixth Streets systemic traffic system improvements, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seven is a resolution approving award of contract to Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa, in the amount of eight million, seven hundred nine thousand, seventy-eight dollars, eighty-nine cents, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the FY 2018 University Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, contract number nine-three-three, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, no, what is number six? Or is, I can't see if Eric is out there, I took off my glasses.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Number six is, uh, temporary easements that we need for the first phase of the University Avenue construction project. Essentially with, uh, temporary easements, it's generally meaning that we're having to go onto their property to do some work, generally to level out grades or something like that, and then it'll be returned back to its, uh, starting condition when we are done with the project.
Okay. All right, um, and Dennis, uh, can, this, uh, portion of University Avenue, I'm gonna take that thing and...
Oh.
It's something with it. Can you, uh, give us an update, like, on when it starts and, um...
Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer. Um, the contractor, if this is approved, would like to actually begin later this week. Uh, we were planning to have a pre-construction conference on Wednesday, give a notice to proceed, and they would begin on Thursday. A notice will be sent out tomorrow to the, uh, area businesses to inform them of the project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, will there be something put out to the public too as well? I mean, obviously, they can find out now, but just a, you know, a memo or, or press release or something just regarding...
Good question.
Yes, um, actually, the project engineers in the audience can probably answer this better, but I know there's a number of different ways that, uh, information's being disseminated to the public and businesses.
Michelle Sweeney, AECOM. We are going to actually be doing a multitude of different ways of communicating with the public via Facebook, the city's website, and also notifying any of the adjacent stakeholders. We've also, at the different various, um, public information meetings that we've had, we've also had, um, locations where people can sign up to get email notifications, so there's a number of different ways that people can sign up, so feel free to email the project website and, or project email, and then we'll get you added to that list too if you want the direct emails, or feel free to like us on Facebook or anything like that.
There's no real-time videos you're going to...
Like the Eagles catching.
Yeah. Is there, um, is there a, is there a page, there's a page dedicated just to this project, right?
Correct, yes, we do have a Facebook page that is, uh, dedicated, uh, solely to the University Avenue project, and that's what we're gonna use for all three phases. So, if there's different phases that people are interested in, they can sign up now, or they can wait till their phase is under construction, or however they wish to proceed.
And they, they, you've been in contact with Wendy as well, so that way we can...
Yeah, if you, if you go to the, um, city website and go on their quick links.
Yep.
Um, there's a university page as well, and so also, um, other construction closures and updates that are taking place as well, but that one's right on the website.
Excellent, good deal.
Yep, all right. Is there anyone else that has questions about this particular, these particular items? Going a second time? You have something? Uh, who, who made that motion? Oh, oh, um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take, uh, eight, nine, and ten, please. Anyone? I'll take them.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Eric?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to a professional service agreement with AECOM in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year 2018 University Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, Green Hill Road to Evergreen Avenue, contract number nine-three-three, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number nine is a motion approving final quantity summary for a net increase of four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars fiscal year 2017 East Fifth Street parking garage repairs, contract number nine-thirty, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number ten is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by McGill Restoration of Omaha, Nebraska, in an amount, in the amount of five hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars for fiscal year 2017 East Fifth Street parking garage repairs, contract number nine-thirty, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Um, no, could you talk about number nine, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. In your council communication, I think, uh, Mr. Boson had done a great job of putting together, um, the change order totals for the project. You may recall back when we first, uh, approved the project contract amount, um, then we actually had the first change order to kinda change the timeline to move it through faster, um, so the, the ramp would be closed less time, um, for the public's use and, and get more done. As we continued through, um, there was a deduct change order, then another add, and really, it comes down to, this last one is for the, uh, uh, original contract quantities, uh, that were estimated for concrete, for piping, and things like that. Really, as you're getting into these older structures, as they're repairing the floor, repairing the wall structures, sometimes they found that there was more disrepair as they got into the wall systems, um, that they had to adjust the quantities, and this is a small amount for the overall contract of five hundred and thirty-one thousand.
All right. Any questions? Anyone in the audience or council? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Uh, you know, I'm sorry, I remiss, the, the University Avenue project, I'm sorry, is going to be a phenomenal project, so that's something that all of us can be very proud to see that progress. Number eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-seventy-nine as amended city Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment to, or on a certain property located south of twenty-nine-eleven Southland Drive.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, questions? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna remind that, um, Mr. Fishels, when he was here last week, he said there was no urgency to this, so I don't see any need to go to the third time.
Yep. All right, um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Shimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Shimp?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, all right, thank you. Uh, number twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, number twelve, you don't want me to take number thirteen with that? No?
I wish you could.
Mr. Mayor, number twelve.
All right.
Number twelve is a motion approving change order number two for a net increase of one thousand, two hundred dollars to Woodruff Construction, Inc., for additional exterior improvements to hangar number four at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Let us know, are you getting some fancy exterior improvements? Is that what happened?
Good evening, Mayor Hartz, and members of city council, Keith Gaspary, Airport Director. We are literally spending the last few dollars of this grant for fiscal year eighteen, uh, to get to the twelve-hundred-dollar total, we're gonna be spending some of our own, uh, four hundred and ninety-one dollars to make that twelve-hundred-dollar total, and that's coming out of the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Fund account number thirteen-seventy-one. So, we're making some additional improvements to the exterior doors, um, to continue the phased improvements for exterior improvements to that very dated hangar.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Madam, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Mr. Mayor? I would move, I'm sure number thirteen is gonna be a lengthy discussion, I would move that we recess for ten minutes.
Uh...
Can we introduce it first? Oh, do you wanna introduce it? Yeah, sure. Well, however you wanna do it.
We'll be probably recessing during the process.
You can recess since your motion has been made yet. You guys, you can recess since no motion really has been made yet.
We can, we can recess, there's not been a motion yet, so you wanna take, uh, I mean, ten minutes?
I need a second.
Uh, for a ten-minute recess, uh, there's a motion's been made with the...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, um, it's time we, uh, get back started, so if we could, uh, please have your attention.
Motion, motion to reconvene?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back open. I just want to also acknowledge, um, Councilman Schmidt is not here this evening, has an important, um, um, family situation that he's with, or you know, he would be here, uh, with us tonight, so, uh, just wanted to reiterate that. So, um, also want to, um, lay some ground, ground rules here as well. Um, last year, last week, um, I thought we had, uh, very decent conversation, uh, although, uh, may not agree on every point, I thought the council did a pretty good job, um, as well, so I'm going to ask that the audience, um, follow that lead from last week as well. Um, it's a very sensitive time, this time of year, and we're talking about positions, we're talking about dollars for your departments, and I know people are very passionate about those particular areas, um, but I'm going to ask that we are very respectful in our conversation, and if it moves to the point where, uh, I deem it lack of respect, we will, um, cut you off of that podium. Uh, if you need to address, uh, address someone, please address me, uh, with your comments, and then we will take it from there, but we just ask that that level of respect and that Waterloo love is showcased in your comments, so without further ado...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. 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 Morrissey?
Following the agenda, I believe, is what we need to do at this point, Kelly, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, number thirteen, a resolution approving fiscal year 2019 budget with a total tax levy rate of seventeen point seven-three-two-six in property and exercise task askings in the amount of forty-one million, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. So, um, before we open it up for, um, audience conversation, I want, uh, Ms. Weedner to kind of explain, um, explain exactly, uh, what that number means and how we ended up getting here from our conversation last week. Last, was it last week? I can't even remember anymore. I've been here the whole weekend, so...
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer, I'm going to have you refer to not the first item I handed out, but the second two pages that are the state budget forms. Um, we're in uncharted territory in my tenure with the city of Waterloo at the potential of possibly not passing a budget by the deadline. Um, so, we've, we've never been in this position before. I had spoken to the state last week, they told me that if you don't adopt a budget by a, by March fifteenth, that we revert to the tax dollars basically received for the current fiscal year, and that excludes debt service and a few other little tweaks. Um, so that is how I responded to the question that I was asked last Thursday night, was that if you don't pass a budget by Thursday, you will revert to last year's taxes. The certification page in front of you comes down to that amount. Um, we would collect forty-one thousand, or forty-one million, I'm sorry, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars, and that works out to a levy rate of seventeen dollars, seventy-three point two-six-one cents. That's higher than the current year's levy rate, and the reason for that is because we had lower taxable value this year. So that, that really does give us the same tax dollars. If we adjust the debt service levy downward, as we were planning to do, we could reduce that from the seventeen seventy-three. However, I did calculate the debt service payments, assuming that the state would honor their commitment about the backfill. And now, as we developed our budget, just to give you the background on the backfill, it was included in the governor's proposal to fund it. Then the Senate, a couple of weeks ago, put a bill out there to start reducing it by a third. And just last week, when, I can't remember if it was Wednesday or Thursday, the day of the hearing, the House did put a bill out there that would reduce it by a third the first year, and then would work its way down by lesser reductions in future years. So they stretch it out a little longer. So we may think it's important not to reduce the debt service levy rate as much as I anticipated. That, the general fund askings exclusive of TIF need to be reduced by about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars if we're going to, um, reach this levy rate. And those, which departments would be affected by those reductions have not been made. We were hoping to get feedback from council before we do that.
So, so to reiterate, um, to, to have last year's collections, um, that was, even last year's collection equate to about a thirteen cent higher levy rate because of, um, valuations and those types of things, which are out of our control, so people will know. Um, also to note, contact your legislature and let them know that they need to honor that commitment that they made some time ago for the commercial backfill, which was done about four or five years ago. Uh, because if that commitment is not honored, then that gets placed on the backs of our residents and our businesses. So contact your legislator about that. Um, so that's where this number came from, because there was a little confusion, um, in the beginning, so we at least wanted to, to talk about that. Um, since then, I, I will say, we've had some lively conversation amongst council members. Folks have been talking, um, trying to come up with different options, uh, with what they believe is important for the City of Waterloo. And, um, you know, some, you tighten up the belt straps a little bit, and some is trying to find new sources of revenue as well. So there's been a lot of conversation. So this evening, um, we, um, we have, I don't know how many proposals. We have options one through five, I believe. Options one through five. Um, so I don't know if people want to take their particular options and talk about them or, or how you want to do so. And then, um, or do we, council, would you rather have the audience speak first? So please, the podium...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Schimpf, uh, I, I'd like us to present our options for the audience to hear, because if we start presenting ours, are they going to be allowed, if they've already spoke, to come, come back up again or not, Mr. Mayor?
Probably not.
So could we present ours first, and that way, um, the audience, uh, knows what we're talking about with our options, so?
Sure.
It's just a consensus of the council.
So what Mr. Morrissey is saying, um, there's several different options and proposals. Uh, we're not necessarily asking the citizens to vote on those. Um, that's what council will do, but to present exactly what's there in each option to give you a chance to kind of hear it. But, 'cause some of, some of, some of all of us up here haven't heard all of those options too, so to give us an opportunity to digest this council, and then we'll take public comment at that point as well. So, um, we got five options, uh, let's go, someone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Looking at option one, yeah. Uh, I do echo the mayor's, uh, request that we do contact our lawmakers to, um, lobby them to keep their commitment on the rollback funds. Uh, those are funds that we're counting on. Uh, they're still in the budget this time. The governor still had it in her budget. So it's a commitment that we made together to, uh, lower the, uh, taxes for the commercial customers, and they were going to backfill those taxes to us. And so we can't, literally count on that money, every dollar of it in this budget. So we're still counting on that. And so, um, I would say that we would please, uh, follow what the mayor requests us to do and lobby our lawmakers. Um, so we started out, um, knowing that, uh, we started out at a budget initially, a published of eighteen eighteen, and we know, we know that the biggest problem was that some property values were devalued. So we had some headwinds right out of the gate. Um, no fault of anyone here, we just, the values were down, so we actually increases our levy rate right there. Uh, looking at then what the mayor was able to do, bringing the budget down to seventeen seventy-six, I took that as a starting point, and we've kind of been talking to a lot of people, working together, talked to the mayor, I talked to Michelle on this. Um, and so what I proposed, and I actually have an option here, um, which I'd also like to modify, uh, and more talking today as well, figuring out what we should or should not do, bigger picture wise. Um, my option actually ends up, um, with a levy rate of seventeen fifty-nine. So we actually lower, um, our levy rate one penny. Doesn't quite fall in line with our strategic plan. However, we have to, at these times, when we're throwing curveballs in life, we've got to pull together, compromise, adjust. So I'm asking all of us to compromise, um, and work together on this budget. So the additional changes I made on top of what we have here at seventeen seventy-six is, um, at this point in time, we, if we do keep the franchise fee in of a half a percent, um, if we keep the fan, that'll give us four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, as in additional revenue for nineteen. I'm hoping that would be a one-time thing, and I hope we can adjust that in one year with some ideas that our council has for increased revenue this next year, nineteen. We, we will, at this point, also, um, add in the two hundred and, I believe it's ten thousand that we had left over from, uh, the eighteen budget, so we're going to count on that. Um, and so we're going to pull that in as, as revenue for this budget. So that's sitting there, we're going to use that. Um, it's, and then, uh, no one gets laid off with this budget. We, we do, um, we do not fill two and a half positions. We don't, we don't fill a position in central garage and cultural arts, and about a half a position that will be absorbed in the library, so, which is an administrative position. So with, with that, uh, option, with those options on the table, that, that actually brings us down to seventeen fifty-nine, roughly speaking.
All right, thank you.
Was that option number, that was number three?
That's the first one, option number one. So if you take, if you take a look at, um...
And the change that was made was the franchise fee is now back in.
Is the franchise fee in this or not?
It's not.
It's not in?
She put it back in.
So the only change to your option one that was handed out is we added the franchise fee back in. The reason we, we, we talked about pulling money from TIF, we talked about more, uh, money coming from the reserves. The reason we really don't want to go down that road is because if we take too much from our reserves, it could ultimately affect our bond rating.
Okay.
Uh, we got to have liquidity in our city. Uh, really, the reserve is there to cover, uh, those emergencies that we, um, we just can't plan for. So we really want to, we're going to take a little bit from our reserves, and that is true, but we need to do that in a balanced fashion. So we're not going to, we're not going to pull any more from those reserve, uh, funds.
Can we ask questions?
Yep.
Yes, um, Councilman...
You can direct them to me, though. Unless you guys don't mind talking back and forth. We're various, we, we are so civil tonight, we could all be engineers.
(laughing).
Or Shepherd.
Where's my slide?
You'll get that later.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just a little confused with the form, so help me out here. Use more fund balance, but under the amount of the change, there's a negative two-ten. So we would wind up taking two hundred and forty thousand out of our fund balance? Or what's the amount that we would use?
Two-ten. Two, two hundred, two hundred and ten, so, um...
So what's the cumulative change column?
That's just the running total.
So we take thirty thousand before, and we're going to take another two-ten?
Thirty, what, what thirty thousand?
Well, from two-ten to two-forty.
No, it's, no, it's four hundred and fifty thousand minus two hundred and ten thousand, you have two hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah.
It's a running total.
Of, of the changes on this particular page. He's made another adjustment that's not on your page anywhere.
Yes.
So the total from fund balance would be two-ten?
Yes, ma'am.
No, then there's another five hundred that was already taken out to get to seventeen seventy-six.
So let me, let me just explain one thing. So, so what had happened, so the proposal that was made the other night, um, council, I believe probably every council member probably decided, let's work from here and make some changes from that. We did, how many months of going through different departments, talking to different staff? And so that's what the changes are based upon. The reason we're able to put it on there, there was a slight change, and that was sixty... How much was it? How many thousands was it? Didn't you add something to the... You didn't? This isn't? Uh-oh, let me be quiet. They're just, they're basing, basing what they're doing off of this.
So on this, it was five hundred thousand?
Yeah, let me back up one second, Mr. Mayor. So, um, one second, Chris. So, um, we, we started with seventeen seventy-six. That was down from eighteen eighteen, and, and how we got there was, we did add in, as we did last year's budget, we have in there five hundred thousand from our reserves. We're hoping not to use all of that. As this lasted in eighteen, we did not use all of the five hundred. Michelle, I can tell you how much we did use, but, uh, we're hoping, we're hoping not to use all that five hundred thousand. It also, the seventeen seventy-six also includes the backfill money. So that's why I'm saying it's very critical that we receive the backfill money. At this point, they haven't taken it out. It's still, it's still available to us. So that's, with that money added in, we start with seventeen seventy-six. The additional funds we're taking from the reserves is two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Plus the five hundred thousand here.
The five hundred is already built into the seventeen seventy-six.
Yeah. So we have the five hundred thousand that was in the seventeen seventy-six.
Yes, ma'am.
You are then taking out, or this proposal takes out two hundred and ten thousand out of that?
No.
Two hundred and ten on top.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm confused on the forms.
We're going to take our time, and we're going to work through this tonight.
Thank you.
But that's, that, okay, so, in seventeen or eighteen, there was some leftover from the five hundred thousand, and it was two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So that takes that as to the five hundred.
And adds that to the five.
Yep. What's the two hundred and forty, then? Where's that come from?
So, the two forty, there's a, you're missing the, first of all, he wanted to increase the, the, he wanted to eliminate the increase in the franchise fee. So I have to add that cost back. That's why that's a positive number, because I, that would increase the levy rate if I don't have that revenue.
Oh, you're taking the two-ten from the four-fifty.
So you take four hundred and fifty, and then the next suggestion was to use fund balance of two-ten, which reduces the levy rate. So that four hundred and fifty minus two-ten gets to two forty. That, that's what the two forty is. And it is confusing, because now as he gets to the bottom, he's going to change the four fifty. But as, let's, if we work through the form the way it is, you start with adding back four fifty, then subtracting two hundred and ten, then subtract the positions. And then what's not on here is, um, putting the four fifty back, which then would make that in parentheses.
So I understand the cumulative change on that column, but again, it's two hundred and ten thousand plus the five hundred.
Yes. So, so then, when we add back in the four hundred and fifty thousand, we have a, an a plus of twenty-one eight thirty-one, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, which is just short of one penny. On our new, our new levy rate is, uh, uh, twenty, uh, um, what is it, Michelle?
Seventeen fifty-nine?
Roughed it out. I think it's seventeen point five nine zero three eight.
One cent is twenty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. One, one penny equals twenty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. So we almost have a penny left over, so that's why I say I'm roughly, roughly lowering the levy rate from seventeen sixty to seventeen fifty-nine.
And in, in all of these proposals, I think one thing to keep in mind is that, um, you know, we probably should have had this in fine print, but the, the levy rate can go up, and you still could have a residential property tax decrease. And I think that's been a little bit of the misconception about what has happened, because you hear levy rate like, oh my God, we just went up like sixteen cents. And then you take a look at it, it's actually over a one percent or one and a half percent residential reduction of what you'll have to pay out of your pocket for your house. So when you hear those things, it's not a perfect science. There's some things that was mentioned that we can't necessarily control with some of our valuations. But if you hear that, so this, um, we don't have the number offhand, but this could be, I don't know how much of a residential decrease, but, um, you know, but it's probably at least two percent, right? At least my unofficial, non-equivalable qualitative...
Keep going.
Probably a little more than that, probably two point three.
So it could be a two point three, potentially, um, reduction.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This proposal would still reduce two fire positions?
Yep. Every, everything that was on the first proposal is just add these things into that. So that is, that is the proposal.
So the two fire positions would be gone? In your proposal, Bruce?
Right.
I'm, I'm adding, I'm starting with the seventeen seventy-six and moving forward.
Yeah.
So you're starting with what the mayor presented last week.
So it is this document, fully amended the way that you just said.
Yeah, that plus this.
Okay, so the departments are split up that way, according to what the mayor said, and then your changes there, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, but the, the one thing, there are two things that are, um, and that is with the mechanic position, um, most of that position is paid for out of road use tax funds. And is that considered here? And aren't we mixing apples and oranges by doing that, Bruce? That's, that's my only que, that's one question there. And the other one, I'm just trying to figure out here right now, but if you could answer that one first, so...
So, Michelle, the mechanic position is how much off the general fund? Is that, uh, is that eighty-four thousand, or is eighty-four thousand five ninety-four?
I believe we did have that included in the cost, so it was about forty percent charged to the general fund. So this will change how much is allocated to the general fund versus road use, sanitation, and sewer, if you remove it.
So it doesn't really all go towards reducing the levy?
Well, it has, the way it's presented.
I know, but it won't.
Well, it is going to, unless you change it. Yeah, so...
And, um, the other question, oh, with, with that change, the way I've looked at it, Michelle, that amounts to, um, about three point seven, um, on the, or zero point three seven off of the levy rate, which computes then to, uh, roughly about eighty-five thousand dollars, if you consider it twenty-two six nine one. Is that right, Michelle, or no?
Yes, that's what's on your paper.
Okay, so my question is, then the next one that's in option number one, it removes the library position, um, and it goes from seventeen point eight oh above, if I'm reading this correctly, down to seventeen point seven eight, and that's a difference of point one one five, which, that's a whole heck of a lot of money for one half of a library position.
It's, it's not removing a position.
Five thousand, and that's...
It's, it's not removing a position.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I, okay. No, it's not, okay.
It's kind of combining two positions together. So it's a savings of roughly, um, thirty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-five.
So that's the same as thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay. That's what you're saying.
We've had a lot of numbers this past week, so...
Right, okay, and that's in this parentheses over here, Bruce, right?
Mm-hmm.
Over here, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions about option one? All right, option two, I don't know.
I believe that's my option.
Mr. Schimpf.
All right. In option number two, we eliminate the increase in the franchise fee, which, um, makes us, we lose, we lose the revenue of four hundred and fifty thousand. We do eliminate, as option number one does, one position from the central garage, which, um, saves us eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. We remove the graphic arts position, which saves us sixty-one thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars. We would not fill one police officer position, which would save eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, and we would delay the hiring of two officers for six months, which would save another eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. We would also in that use an additional fund balance of one million dollars, equating to one point five million in reserve funds that would be used, which I would strongly suggest that later on in the year, we look at using our TIF funds to, um, replace that fund balance in any way that we can. I think that is very essential. I'm also extremely opposed to the franchise fee, because to me, we're taking from the right pocket instead of the left, is what we're doing. Um, no matter what, the, any of the decreases that I've seen on the franchise fee, they would equate out to about the same thing that you would pay in Mid-America. So to me, what that's doing is, is that's taking that off of the property taxes, and it's saying to the folks, we're not going to let you deduct this from your taxes at the end of the year. We're just going to take it on your energy bill, is what we're going to do. So, I, I, I think it's important to take a look at that, too. Questions?
Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey, then.
And again, this is taking off the mayor's.
Yes, mayor's.
So all the departments are spoken to in here, except for the changes that you made here, and that includes the elimination of two firefighter positions. And then you're eliminating one police officer, and two other officers won't be hired for six months if they're hired even then. Right? Okay.
They'll be budgeted to be hired come January one.
And I guess I'll speak to franchise fees and all that other stuff when our options come up. But, I know we have a very strong dis, disagreement about that one.
This ends up with a levy rate of seventeen dollars, seventeen-point-three-eight-two-three. This is actually the lowest levy rate proposed out of any of these proposals.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, um, can I ask Ms. Weidner what, um, using the additional fund balance, to use one-point-five million of our fund balance, would that impact our, our standing for our bonds? What would it do?
You know, I can't really speak for Moody's, but I think that's, I'm concerned about that. And I believe that they would be very concerned about that. That would likely reduce our reserves to fifteen percent or slightly lower. And, I think that's a, that's a big chunk to take out of there. It's very difficult to replace. We would not be able to replace it from TIF during fiscal nineteen. I mean, maybe potentially you could replace it in future years, but I, I think you would've already damaged our rating. Because we'll go to Moody's, we're planning to visit with them this April, and this budget should be final by then, so they'll be aware of that.
And that would be my concern, that it could impact our bond rating, um, which would cost us money in the long run. So I, I, I have the concern with that. Um, the other concern I had, maybe is addressed by Mr. Anderson, as to how much, I mean, this is implying that we have excess dollars in TIF that we don't need to pay off debt, or that we don't need for projects in our growth areas. So, what do we have in TIF?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, um, you're exactly hitting it correctly on. Um, you know, obviously, we've been working to develop our industrial and business parks within the city, and bring businesses here to help for long-term stability by creation of tax base and jobs. The TIF districts are designed to be set up to capture that, that property tax, to create the business park and industrial park environments. Um, we're in the stages now of extending infrastructure into a lot of our areas. Um, I would be more concerned not having shovel-ready lots, ready for businesses that wanna come here and be able to show them to them, than having a higher levy rate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Um, Noel, how much money do we have in the TIFT funds?
Each of the TIF districts is different, so we'd have to get you kind of a full report on those. Some of those are, are, you know, there's a lot more debt in the downtown and the Rathlins, obviously, because it's a lot more expensive for redevelopment of those areas. Um, the other TIF districts, um, at the airport, of course, is tied to the Logan Plaza, so we have a lot of obligations for the redevelopment of Logan Plaza. We've approved development agreements for a rail spur to serve, uh, the western airport area. Um, we're putting infrastructure into the northeast industrial park area. Um, we are obligated to buy land in the sand martin area. So again, we have a lot of debt obligations that we have to fulfill with the TIF money being generated to continue to, to move ahead.
I, I seem to vaguely remember seeing a figure of two hundred and eighty-nine million, is that right?
I believe that's the valuation in the TIF districts. But then remember, there's also debt that goes along with that.
Can I ask? So if, if you wanted to, um, say for instance, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars released, that, how much actual does that cost out of wherever you pull that from? Is that twenty-four or thirty-one?
Um, I believe that would be about twenty-four million that you'd have to remove from TIF for the city to get four hundred and fifty thousand additional, excluding the debt service levy, and of course, the other entities would get more of that. We'd get about forty-four percent, they would get about fifty-five percent of the revenue that's generated by the twenty-four million. And I used the eighteen tax rates to calculate that, because I don't know what the nineteen rates are for everyone yet.
Yeah, good conversation. Any other questions on option two? All right, option three.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey, I take it that's yours?
Yes. And what, what this does is, this is directly taken from, uh, the, the front and back, uh, two pages that we discussed, uh, last, last Thursday night, or your budget, the mayor's budget of that night. And, um, the, uh, and, what it does is, we use your, um, all the different departments that you had in there, um, at those, uh, with those, uh, ideas that you had put in the comment section and that. And, uh, we use that seventeen seventy-six levy rate budget, and we make the following changes. First, the two fire, uh, positions are restored. They're put back in for a total of two hundred fourteen thousand and seventy dollars. Uh, secondly, we add back in the reduction to the library. The library should not, and Mr. Mayor cannot be reduced anymore. Uh, we're in jeopardy of having our library not accredited. Um, and that includes that half position. And that puts back in forty-three thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars. The third thing, it adds back in, uh, to Human Rights Department, six thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. And, that may seem like a small number, but to the Human Rights Commission, it's a big number. Uh, they, they operate on a shoestring over there. Uh, and then we make the following revenue adjustments in this, uh, proposed, uh, in this proposal, um, other than your, um, franchise fee of, of half a cent, and, uh, the five hundred thousand, uh, uh, money from the general fund, is we include that fiscal year two thousand seventeen unused budget of two hundred and ten thousand, that I believe that, uh, councilperson Jacobs had already spoken to in his. And then we also put in a seven percent increase in fees and permits, which go to the property tax collection, or a total of four hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars. Now that may seem like a lot of money, but please keep in mind that, that the people that are paying those fees and permits haven't had really any raises. This does not include golf, nor does it include the sportsplex. Um, specifically, golf was, uh, was, uh, increased last year, and the sportsplex, any increase there would have to go back to sportsplex, it wouldn't come back to, um, the general revenue anyway. Uh, and next is, the, the results of this, I, I believe are important. Uh, first of all, it lowers the levy rate by eighteen cents, uh, from, uh, that proposed budget to seventeen fifty-eight. And then by raising the gas and electric fee by half a cent per dollar, or it's a half a dollar per hundred dollars, or one dollar per, for a two-hundred-dollar monthly customer utility, okay? So one hu, if you have a utility bill in your month and it's two hundred dollars, this will increase it only one dollar, if you have that high of an electric bill. Some people do, some people don't. Other one, the, third one is that, what it reduces in the city portion of your overall property tax bill, the city portion will go down twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. So overall, put into a person's pocket that's paying property taxes and has, and does gas and electric, they're getting about a dollar more a month in their pocket. So it's a gain by using this. And what that does is it maintains all public services at their current level. There's no cuts, public safety is at a hundred percent, and will be kept at a hundred percent. So, that's proposal number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So can we go over, you're increasing the fees on here, seven percent, excluding golf, excluding the sportsplex?
Correct.
So we're increasing fees on contractors when they come up to the building, get their building permits? Um, what, what else are we increasing fees on? I know there was this, a whole slew of, what, about twenty different fees? Can we go over what some of those fee increases are?
I have to defer to Michelle Weidner.
That's what I was.
Well, she went through that whole list.
She went through the list the other night, at least, uh, quite a bit of it, but if, if you want her to go over it again.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, Ron, just off the top of your head, you don't have to have the, 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 um, oh, you got it.
Um, some of them would be fees in the city clerk's office, so it'd be pet licenses, um, gosh, what all do we license there? It's hard on the spot. Pet licenses, uh, rental registration fees, taxi fees, peddler's permits, transient merchant permits, things like that.
Basically, it is, excuse me, a user fee. I mean, it is, it's not gonna be charged to people that don't need the p, permit.
Right, so when you say rental registration, we're also gonna increase the fees on landlords, then? That's what we're gonna do, too.
On what?
Landlords.
If there's a fee associated with that.
There is.
So, Pat, if I could ask a question? So we're gonna increase fees of four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. A lot of those would probably be business owners, people that wanna build here, pull out building permits. It's kind of an advantage that we hold out in Waterloo. We always say we have cheap water, we have, you know, cheap sewer, all this, and we have a great, we're business friendly, and we don't feed to death. But now, uh, we're just gonna go ahead and feed ya. So we're, now we're gonna be, is that even higher than our competitors? Is the seven percent, if you checked, are we higher than Cedar Rapids now? Are we higher than Cedar Falls? Is that one more reason for a business not to wanna come to Waterloo?
I can only tell you that one of the conversations I had was from somebody who had stated that in Cedar Falls, their fee, and I didn't write it down, their fee was ten dollars more than what it was in Waterloo. You know, and that's an example that I give there. And the other one is that these fees and permits that I'm talking about, uh, not including the golf and sportsplex, they have not seen any increases, uh, lately. And we're just trying to deal, as, as you had said, uh, uh, Councilman Jacobs and, and Councilman Shimp, we're in ti, trying to deal with a, uh, bad hand that got dealt to us from state government, uh, from the people that passed on down to us. And we're trying to do this, and all that I have had, uh, since last Thursday night, is comments from people that say, "I will pay a few dollars more, just don't cut our services." And, that's what this proposal, this number one proposal is doing, but it's going even beyond that with these increases that I'm talking about, as well as their, uh, uh, including back into the budget, the things that we said. People still are going to get, overall, a dollar more in their pocket at the, at the end of every month.
And that's the number, option three, not one?
Number three, yeah, sorry about that.
All right, you found any, yes ma'am.
As long as we're gonna bring up who called us and how we got called, I kept track of my calls, and they were slightly ahead on holding the line. I got calls from, I got a call from an eighty-year-old gentleman who's trying to stay in his home. He does not want his heating bill to go up, or his cooling bill. I got him from a cross-section of the city, not just my ward.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna talk about that. I had overwhelmingly, um, people saying, "Please keep our services. We don't wanna lose police, we don't wanna lose fire, we don't wanna lose, um, our recreational opportunities across the board." They said, "We are willing to pay more as long as we don't lose services." That was the overwhelming, uh, in fact, I didn't have anybody call me that wanted their taxes reduced.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna make, um, that didn't want their taxes reduced?
Right.
At the absence of services, you mean, right?
Well, yeah. They want their services kept.
Okay, let, let's, let's, just for clarity, every proposal tonight that you've heard will put more money in your pocket, whether it's a half percent, um, on the fee versus, uh, uh, one-point-four-two, or two and a half, or everything you've heard tonight equates to a savings in your house, so that's that part.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we go here, and then I want, you, because you, you brought up the fees, and I want that to be answered, but can we come to you right after she? Okay, yes ma'am.
Okay, so, the fees were just an overall thing. It does include all the licenses and permits issued out of the clerk's office. It does include things like cap your commissions out of the police department, and fire department, too, I'm sure. Um, it does include the permits for building, and then, um, the, the rental registration is here somewhere. Yeah, it does include twenty-three hundred dollars for rental registration, for example. That would be for one percent increase, though. Also includes engineer fees, planning and zoning. We do have in here to increase ambulance revenue, which may not be collectible if it's Medicare or Medicaid, and the rates are controlled by others. Culture and arts, leisure, airport, library, any, any place that has a fee, Young Arena. So, to get to that one percent, and we did pick ev, everything. There are small amounts individually at one percent, but if we raise it to seven or eight, obviously, we've gotta go seven or eight times that.
All right, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add, uh, to what you said there, that, uh, yes, the proposals so far, the proposals so far have put money, every one of them put money back in, but I, it needs to be added to that, that the proposal that I just gave does not take away any positions. Public safety is fully funded, fire, police.
Actually, I think I, I need to address that, because there are changes in the mayor's proposed budget. Um, some part-time goes down, I think there's at least one full-time position that is reduced to part-time. So, um, we need to remember that there were already, there was a lot of work put into reaching the seventeen seventy-six tax rate, and that didn't come with no pain to your departments. I think your departments all met with you, and we all told you what those two and a half and five percent cuts would be. So, I just wanna be sure we're clear about that.
But these proposal, this proposal would reinstate those cuts, right?
Not all of them, only, only the few that are mentioned on this worksheet.
So, so, um, for option three, it tells you exactly what was added back. All right, Mr. Jacobs?
I just wanna follow up, um, I, once again, the government never creates anything. Business creates jobs and, and starts the cycle of pay, and we want businesses to want to come to Waterloo. We don't wanna give another reason for them not to come here, or to compete against us. Um, if we want housing starts, we gotta be business friendly and make sure that we're encouraging people to build their house in Waterloo. Um, the Alliance presented their last presentation, that it was, one of the biggest concerns they had was, was, uh, cost, and that they hear about Waterloo. So, we don't wanna do anything to, to discourage, I think Mr. Anderson would probably confirm, we wanna do everything we can do to encourage business to come to Waterloo. That's the jobs that we're looking for, that actually gets the ball rolling for all of us. And so that's why we don't wanna do anything to, to hurt that or damage that process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
Um, I, I just have to kinda take issue with the idea that we're putting money back in people's pockets. We are taxing their heating and cooling bills at a higher level than they were last year. We're not, we're not giving money back.
Okay, so, so this is the part, so the, the, if you read, uh, in, in the Courier article today, um, it outlined, um, that some of the ways that people have been able to deal with the changes in the rollback from city to city has been a, been a careful consideration of, um, uh, cost savings, and, um, with revenue, abilities to generate revenue. And, the franchise fee was put in place, and many cities across the state have utilized that. So when we talk about just actual numbers, when we talk about right now, um, it's almost what? If you have a hundred thousand dollar house, it's about what, a dollar per one percent? So we're at three percent. So that's three dollars, three dollars. You add a half percent, you're talking about, um, fifty cent versus an entire one percent. Fifty cent on that hundred thousand dollar house, if it's consistent user, you're talking about six dollars per month. Even the first proposal that was put forth, yeah, here, yeah, even the first proposal that was put forth, not, I mean, just e, even go back from even the bait, the base, or we can use that one. That is lowering the residential property asking that citizens will have to pay. I think it was close to two-point-five percent on a hundred thousand dollar house, and that's about, every percent is about twenty-two dollars less for a house that's a hundred thousand dollars. That's a little more than my house. That's a little more than my house, but, and if you're talking about a house where it's two-hundred-thousand dollars, that's close to thirty, forty dollars that they're going to see per hundred-thousand dollars. So you're talking about three to six dollars for residents versus twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty, forty dollars in property tax reductions. So three-point-five is a compromise between what I've heard from zero to one-point-two-five percent, so, um, that is, that is the difference, and that is more money, that is more money. I know I heard right-hand, left-hand, but that is more money. Yes, ma'am?
What would it do to John Deere's? John Deere's is going to be hit hard by the increases in these bills, and the churches, and the nonprofits. What about the big, the big biters at that?
The big users. So, if you, if you take a look at how much, how much revenue, so, we're talking about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from a half percent, um, a half percent, point-five, point-five percent. That four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is divided by anywhere from twenty to twenty-eight thousand different users. So residents, of course, are less users than businesses, and that, that is true. So John Deere uses more, Allen probably uses more, Covenant, other places as such, but they're more, they, they, they use more. But if you take a look at, part of the challenge that we, that you've addressed, that all of us addressed, is what is taking place on the state level. You know, businesses have received considerable reductions in commercial property taxes, business, uh, property taxes. I'm, I'm not anti-business, because that's all day long, all day long. That's exactly, you know, what we're trying to do, bring jobs. But when you take a look proportionately, it's been the residents that have not received the same type of reduction. And so that's why tonight is so important, because we're talking about, even the, the proposal that I put forth the other day, we're talking about the largest residential decrease in the last twenty years. So residents need to have an opportunity to feel some of that savings, too. We always talk about Mary Smith and, uh, um, uh, Tim Jamison's that live in our communities. Oh, yeah, but I'm just using that as an example. So, so I, I understand absolutely, absolutely what you're saying. It's careful consideration. Um, but, and so our nonprofits, um, you know, that, that's, that's important, that's important, and I don't have an answer for that. But the residents, the residents, I was thinking, need some type of relief. Yes, ma'am?
What are we going to do when we don't get the rollback? What are we going to do when they actually follow through on what they say they're going, they're really telling us? Both houses have proposals to eliminate one-third. You know they're going to do it. What are we going to do? Are we building a, a sandcastle that's going to be swept away?
Well, I'm pretty sure that every person sitting in this audience, um, before we go, I'm going to give you the telephone numbers for your legislators. And you need to call them and tell them, "Do not touch the backfield." Um, the hope is that the backfield will not absolutely be touched this week, but they made a promise to us. They made a standing appropriation. See, there's a difference between an appropriation and a standing appropriation. A standing appropriation stands through thick and thin. So we're hoping that they follow through on their commitment, um, and we're not, hopefully, we won't deter from that, but they made a commitment to our cities, and each person in here, each person that's looking on television, "Tim, you need to write about it more. Mark, you need to put that on the radio more," but they made a commitment to the citizens of Iowa, and they need to stick through with that. So I absolutely understand what you're saying, and your concern is very real and relevant, but they need to follow through with their commitment. That's soapbox a little bit, but, um,
Mr. Mayor?
What were we talking about?
Run option three.
Option three. Well, okay, I, I'll just, uh, yield to, uh, the next, option four.
Now, option, can I go with option four?
You, you, what will we do?
We'll find a way. We'll have to go to reserves. We'll have to go to reserves.
Well, I'm, I'm definitely not going to tell the legislature right now, so they can go ahead and do it. But, 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 yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Klein, and it's a very, very real reality that we may face. You're right on, right on point.
You know, here's the thing. We had the same information as other communities. We did. We were all informed the same way. Some communities, honest to goodness, saw it coming. I want to know why we didn't, and they opted out two years ago of using it in their budget. And now they're sitting there going, "We don't have a single worry in the world."
Right, right.
Mayor?
But, um, I just, I just spoke with Mayor, Mayor County today from Des Moines, and this was placed, this was placed, they placed, uh, to receive the rollback in their budget as well. Um, they're also taking about a twenty-ish, uh, hit on their levy, and we're talking about not taking any hit, so, um, we're, we're trying to do it, so, so, yes, I understand. Um, everything that Mrs. Klein said about the realities that we could potentially face is absolutely real. We've all been, uh, engaged in the conversation. The governor has put a complete, complete, uh, refilling of the backfield in her proposal as well, and the Senate and the House made some various changes to scale it down over time. But we had, someone over here had a question, and we need to go to option four.
I, I just want to say, and, you know, I, I've heard that from, uh, the Ward One councilperson before about some, and I just would like to get an answer, Mr. Mayor, as to what communities have done what she said. Because some is indefinite.
Our neighbors.
And if Cedar Falls is one of them, is there anybody outside of Cedar Falls that has not put that in their budget? Because I know of none outside of Cedar Falls. I know of many who have.
So with regards to the League of Cities, and actually, the metropolitan group, everybody's holding the line that, that honor, that needs to be, um, committed, needs to be filled. We need to get that money, so everybody's holding the line. But that's the top ten largest cities. That's not, um, our neighboring city.
And, and, you know, the, the budgets that, that we're, uh, introducing here, I see it as a community approach to, uh, resolving or solving a problem that we got here, and it asks nonprofits, it asks business, it asks citizens to all step up to the plate so that we can keep the services that we got in place. Public safety, I know that people sitting here ran on a plank that public safety would never be cut, um, that there would be additional police officers, that the library would never be cut. All I'm saying is these options, starting with option three, is saying, "We're not going to cut those positions. We're going to figure out, and we figured out a way to pay for those while at the same time lowering the levy rate in each one of these option cases, and also returning some money to individual people's pocket."
Right, I, 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 I agree with you, Councilman Morrissey, but, um, you know, right now, we're just discussing options, because people, people have their own way to get to where they believe that we need to be. So there has to be a careful combination of, you know, we're sitting here with three-three, right? Well, I won't say three-three. Who knows where people at, but we have six votes. That's an even number, right? So we need to work together and find some type of compromise. Not everybody wants all fees, not everybody wants positions gone. We need to compromise, and I'm hoping that tonight is not a, a, a will of extremes on either or. We all have our own things that we hold dear and true to us, and our, our things that we campaigned on and talked about. Every now and then, conditions on the ground may show something different, so I'm hoping that everybody could work together and compromise on some things. But let's get to option number four.
I have option number four. It, um, very much, almost all of it is the same as option three that you just heard. The only major difference is it increases the fees by eight percent, generating five-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. And I, I just want to address that, uh, increasing the fees might be something that people don't want to do, but if on one hand you want to reduce the levy rate, then we need to generate other, um, sources of income. And fees are one that I, uh, feel most comfortable with, because it is a user fee. If you don't have a, a need for it, if you don't have a pet, you're not going to build a house, this won't affect you. And so it's, it is indeed a fee just placed on the people that would use it, or use certain services. Um, on a hundred-dollar gas and electric bill, this proposal, um, the bill would only go up fifty cents a month. Uh, residential property owner will see the city portion of the property tax bill go down twenty-six dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. The levy rate would go to seventeen-fifty-five. And so with a two-hundred-dollar-a-month utility bill, the property owner overall would save fourteen thousand per year. And most importantly, all services are maintained at current levels, which is what I repeatedly heard over and over and over. Please don't, um, reduce our, our services. It is very important to us to have a reliable police and fire department, um, to use the library, uh, certainly, human rights is in that same category. But I especially heard from police and fire and library, um, and this restores all of those positions.
Can, can you repeat what that number?
You said fourteen thousand a year savings?
No, fourteen dollars per year.
I heard fourteen thousand, too.
Did I say fourteen thousand? Well, let's go with this one then. No, I'm sorry, fourteen dollars.
Yeah.
Sharon, can you repeat what, what the num, what was the number on the increase on that?
On which?
On the, uh, energy bill?
On a hundred-dollar gas and electric bill, the customer would go up fifty cents.
Per month?
Per month, yeah.
Oh.
That'd be included in the, the increased fees.
Oh, that's already in there, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Shimp, that's already.
That's already part of the proposal that the mayor did initially.
All right, any questions? Very similar, um, just takes the fees up to eight percent instead of seven.
Yeah, and so the levy rate would go down just a, a little bit, seventeen-fifty-five, one-ninety-nine.
All right, uh, any guesses who's option number five could possibly be?
I have option number five, Mr. Mayor, and, um, it is basically similar to option three and option four. There are a few changes. One of the things that this option will do is, is it will lower the levy rate to seventeen-forty-five. Councilman Shipp is right, he has the lowest rate showing. Uh, one of the things with this proposal is, is it will add back those two firefighters.
Add back the two firefighters. It will add funding to the library, add funding to human rights, and use the additional fund balance. And it will also, one of the requests is to increase fees to eight percent. And one of the additional things within this proposal is to increase franchise fees an additional point-two-five percent.
So that, that, we'd increase it to, what, three-point-seven-five? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, and, you know, from a standpoint of the, um, increasing the, um, utilities bill for an individual with the, these fees, it will increase it instead of the fifty cents to seventy-five cents per month on a hundred-dollar bill, or a dollar-fifty on a actual two-hundred-dollar bill. The residential property tax portion is lowered to thirty-one-fifty-five per one-hundred-thousand dollars assessed. And I see that there's going to be some questions here, so.
Yeah, so you yield to the questions. Mr. Jacobs?
I would just comment, you know, it looks like we're getting pretty excited about fees, but, you know, and, you know, Councilwoman Juwan is right, they are user fees. But what could happen is businesses could decide not to use. If you talk to anyone that's been in business, you talk to Lisa and the Alliance out here, businesses are very fee-sensitive. It doesn't take much to tip the pendulum to another city. Mr. Anderson, let me finish. Mr. Anderson would tell you that as well. So when businesses shop, they're very smart. They look at everything. We have, we already have a high, relatively speaking, we already have a high levy rate. Let's not forget that. We're on the high end, folks. Now we're just going to say, "That's okay. We're going to increase eight, fees on these guys eight percent." It's going to really add to the negative column. Maybe they will build here, maybe they won't. What we want them is to build here and bring us those little white jobs.
Councilman Jacobs, I understand exactly what you are saying, but I also understand that I have received numerous calls from individuals in this community. We have to do something in order to be able to make sure that our citizens have all of the services that they need. That is part of what I was elected to do. I understand that you're talking about the user fees, the impact that it potentially has on businesses. I would love to hear from some of those businesses, have some conversations, so please call me, and I'm saying that. You know, the bottom line is, is I'm looking at what we need to do for our citizens to ensure that they have the necessary services for this community.
So, so, you know, and, and the, the conversation is good. It shows the diversity and, uh, perspectives that all of us, uh, come from and bring to the table, so uh, may not see eye to eye on that one, but, um, respectful, cordial discussion is, is highly important. Mrs. Juwan, and then.
Mr. Mayor, just like, like to, eh, there's a squeak someplace.
Okay.
I'd like to add that, I guess, I've been around long enough that I remember, not too long ago, Mr. Triplett from John Deere brought a group of business people together, and at that time, they were considering leaving Waterloo. They said, "If you don't meet the following criteria, we will consider leaving." And housing, and services, and recreation, and all of that played into it. They said, "It is critically important that the citizens of Waterloo have all these services, not only the existing, um, citizens, but the new ones that we want to attract to come work to John Deere." And if you don't do, and there was a list, fairly lengthy list, and maybe somebody from the Alliances remembers it better than I, but I do remember housing, and services, and recreation, and it, they wanted the city to be attractive. They said, "We are willing to pay for that to make sure it happens, so that we can attract and retain the best and the brightest." And that has directed the services of the Alliance for years, and I think it's critically important that we remember the businesses want these services as well as the residents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember when my husband was still, um, a supervisor at the engine works, when John Deere sent in a man, and his only purpose was to make that company healthy, or they were going to cut it loose. And he said, he gathered them all in a, in a big auditorium, and he said, "I'm here for one purpose only, and that is to make you lean." And he said, "If we don't accomplish it, this will close." And he said, "I'm not here to make friends. I'm not here to be anybody's buddy. I have one job. Find out how to make this company profitable." We have a responsibility in this town, service and economics. Service and making sure we're not asking for too much money. It's a difficult balance. We've got to find it.
That's it?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, because looking at these numbers, if you probably, just say, for instance, uh, people weren't satisfied with the fees, and you just went a straight one percent on utility and came in the middle, eliminated the fees, you could add every position back, and you'd be at about seventeen-fifty and have a lower levy rate. More money coming back to citizens from their house, but it'd be about one dollar that a user will pay for that hundred dollars or so. But anyway, uh, it is the public's time. You've sat patiently, you've listened to great dialogue, but it is now your time to come up and, um, talk, let us know your thoughts. Tell the council and the mayor how great folks are, but, um, let us know what your thoughts are. Yes, ma'am.
Wow. My name is Lynn Eldridge, nine-four-nine Ohio Street. I'm tired. Like, I'm sure you guys are tired, too. This is my first council meeting, by the way. Kind of old for this to be my first council. I have like twenty questions, so how do I do this? Do I just get one question? I'm serious. Was that my one question? Or do I just like make a list of them?
You have Quentin Hart, Mayor. I feel, oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mayor Hart. It's very nice to meet you.
You got, you got three, you got three minutes. I think two-twenty now.
So I just ask questions? Okay, so my, my biggest So my, my biggest question, believe it or not, is when I call my state legislator, do I call it backfill? Thank you. And what's my deadline?
Right now, call him tonight.
Call him right now, tonight. Okay, cool.
Decent hour, or in the morning.
Okay, and then I think I just wanna add my voice as one of the, I've been here twenty-nine years. I've owned my home since nineteen ninety-three. I don't have a problem with, with tax increases, sorry. The shenanigans of high finance are beyond me. So if you keep my, the dollars, the real dollars that come out of my pocket the same, I feel like what you're doing is lowering them, right?
Just the property taxes.
Right, I'm sorry, the property, yeah, the property tax portion. So you're lowering that, you're not keeping the real dollars, I mean, we're talking about levies, and we're talking about decreasing value of your homes and all that kinda stuff. I'm willing, and I think other people are willing, I know they are, the people that I work with are willing to do this. Just keep my property tax dollars, you can have the same real dollars as long as I get to keep my policemen and my firemen. I don't care about seventeen seventy-six versus seventeen fifty versus whether my house is worth a hundred-and-fifteen thousand or a hundred thousand. What I care about are the real dollars and the services I get for those dollars. So you don't have to worry about me, and I think there's a whole bunch of me. I really do. I think there's a whole bunch of me. You guys can, I mean, the compromise to me, if y'all want eight percent and you want nothing, four percent's your compromise on your fees. That's just me. Should I run next time? I think that's all I got. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Cody Listico, eight-ten Baltimore Street. I just wanted to first kinda brush up on some of the incidents that I've had in my area since I've lived there in the last nine years. I've had six fires or so in about four blocks, usually about one wreck a year at Baltimore and Williston Street. I had a police standoff across the street once. And out of that, no fatalities that I could find, thank God. Thank you. Also, that Engine Works plant that you just mentioned, that's where I work, it caught on fire about a month and a half ago, and the Waterloo Fire Department was right there on that. Of course, we have some volunteers that kind of get their first responders, but ultimately, it was the Fire Department that made sure that everyone in the building was safe and that it was okay to come back in there and work. And everything was good, we were up and running by probably breakfast. I just wanna say that Waterloo's population is slightly older on average, which is awesome. High five to our senior citizens. But that also goes with the fact that we need a little bit more EMT ambulatory services in this community. And I believe that all departments that go in hand with that, such as road, water, sewer, et cetera, which are generally not totally general fun, those need to be treated well, as, also as well on that. Let's see here, I've got more notes. Losing employees by reducing these positions out, it will be another black eye for our city. And I think we all want Waterloo to be a place where people wanna look to come here instead of worrying about their jobs. Budget shouldn't be built on hope, and I think the fees are a solid way to go. And I also like to note that businesses, they don't like fees, but they also don't like burning down. And I guess that's all I got, so thank you.
How do you follow that? I'll tell ya. Excuse me, dry voice. My name's Lisa Scoobal. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber. Some of you already know me, and some of them are just meeting for the first time. But I'm in charge of the Alliance, I lead staff and programming for helping existing businesses expand here in the Cedar Valley, which includes Waterloo, recruiting new companies to the Cedar Valley, which includes Waterloo. And also, an important component that even Mike Triplett, when he was here, recognized, the ability to recruit talent and keep it in the city of Waterloo and the Cedar Valley area. And that still holds true today. You have a lot of information, and I've been making notes for everything all of you had said. And wow, I, I'm just impressed by the thought that all of you went through this, and first of all, how you conducted yourself tonight in a professional manner. The cameras are on, and people are watching, including our companies and prospects that Noel and I are working with. So I appreciate that. Just a couple points. The city of Waterloo has, it's a great city with a lot of development happening. Retail, industrial, office development, and it's been a privilege of being part of that over the last two decades. TIF has been able to do that by bringing financial resources to develop infrastructure that has helped existing businesses expand here versus locating elsewhere, which they do have choices, and also recruiting new businesses too, by providing good quality jobs for the citizens that live here. Shovel-ready sites, Noel mentioned that earlier, yes, it is important. It's the competitive climate is just, it's amazing now. Where companies are now expecting shovel sites if they're ever gonna consider you. So applaud the city of Waterloo for continuing to make that a priority. Thank you for that, and makes, helps make our job a lot easier. To Mr. Jacobs' point, yes, there's a business case to annual total operating cost. They look at it holistically when they compare locations. Ferguson Enterprise back, oh gosh, I think in the mid-two thousand, they did the same thing. After they made the decision to locate here Waterloo, it was interesting to see the difference over a twenty-year spreadsheet was fifty thousand dollars a year for over twenty years. So companies look at it holistically. It's hard to pinpoint one over the other, it just really depends on where the company's priorities are. But the other thing we look at is talent recruitment, and we've talked about that individually before. I've met with several companies since December on recruiting trips. And the first thing that they asked me, they're not asking me about real estate or buildings or sites. What they're asking me is, do you have a workforce there? Because we don't have any workforce here in the community there. And it's so important that we provide an element in the city of Waterloo. We're welcoming new residents regardless of their background to Waterloo, but providing the adequate housing and other quality of life that will keep them in the community. My time's up, sorry.
You can summarize about fifteen seconds.
Summarize. You have a big job ahead of you. Please settle on a thoughtful budget, which will continue to support future growth opportunities and build on the great success and reputation Waterloo has earned in the state of Iowa. Thank you.
We've had more applause like the last two or three council meetings than I ever remember the past eight years before then. Yes, ma'am.
Betty Wobenaugh, six-two-four Jane Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I would like to ask each one of you what the cost of a loved one's life is to you. My husband and children, and some of my dear, dear friends sitting right here in this room, had to go through that seventeen years ago on March twenty-seventh. I had a very massive heart attack. I was, I died in front of my son's eyes a half a block from here. If it would not have been for two policemen who rushed to the scene to give CPR, and two EMTs that took me to Allen Hospital, code blue, I would not be here today. I would not have been able to enjoy my granddaughter, who was six months at the time. I would not be able to have celebrated my fiftieth wedding anniversary with my husband last Friday night and my two adult children. So I ask you, and I plead with you, to please keep your EMTs, your firemen, and your police officers. Lisa spoke about recruiting businesses to the area. They wanna come to a safe community. They want their workers to have a safe community. So please, I beg of you, look at your budget and keep those positions. Thank you.
Good evening again. Bruce Dubuque, Cazor, CRT Apartments, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm inviting all the young youth in our community to take this on as a civics project. As their teachers, or professors, or educators, to add this as a civics lesson, so they can help, put input into to help, help us all live better, make Waterloo great again. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Spence, four-zero-four-two Jill Drive in Waterloo. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm a Ward-One resident, and I'm also the president of the Waterloo Professional Firefighters Association Local Sixty-Six. My number one concern is the safety for the citizens of Waterloo. My next concern is also for the safety of our firefighters and paramedics that give a hundred percent every day that they come to work. We can't keep doing more with less. Waterloo needs these men and women on their fire trucks and on the ambulances protecting the people of this city. The people of Waterloo deserve to have their firehouses in their neighborhoods open, in service, and properly staffed. As a taxpayer, I know that I wouldn't mind paying a little extra money in taxes or fees to keep my police department and my fire department fully staffed. Love you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Haylor, eight-oh-five Wisner Drive. I echo some of our thoughts or statements of, I'm more than willing to leave my, what I pay in taxes the same, to have the services we have. Our day, every day, our police officers and firefighters walk out the door, not knowing if they're gonna come back. That's the same with any of our services. I know, Mr. Jacobs, you served in the military. You signed that blank check whether you would come home or not. That's the same with our firefighters and police officers, every day. They've got families that want them to come home. You reduce their staffing, there's a good chance that they might not come home. You start closing fire stations, your response times increases. House fire in a room of contents thirty years ago, probably seventeen minutes before the fire moved out of that room and spread into the rest of the residence. Nowadays, with our furnitures that we put in, three to four minutes before it's out of that room. So now you close Station Six, you got all them nice houses out there, and Forest Street, out, South Forest Street. I can guarantee you right now, and with the building construction nowadays, by the time a first engine gets on there, that fire's gonna be spread pretty well throughout the house. That's if you close Station Six. If you look at medical side, you look at your heart attacks, as this lady mentioned earlier, you've got a golden hour. Well, part of that golden hour is the first five minutes. Same with your children, infants. If they're choking, by the time you get EMS on scene, you're worrying about that brain damage. How long does it take before you start having brain damage? If you're moving the station away, closing that station, making the response time. You gotta look at, for those, is insurance cost. Because there's a distance that the insurance looks at as far as response time. Real estate, when I bought my house, we've only lived in Waterloo for six years. I've been in the area for over twenty years. But we could've bought a house in Cedar Falls for lower taxes, but we weren't gonna get the same square footage that we get in Waterloo. That's why we bought in Waterloo. We wanted a better house, a bigger house. Didn't care about the taxes. And I always, I keep hearing everybody talk about the TIF. I understand you gotta bring the business in to keep the money come in. But you gotta think about, where's that money going? With that, you build up, put in like a target, that money goes out of town. It doesn't stay in town. So I just want everybody to know that I'm agreeing that we can raise it, or keep the taxes the way they are.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jordan Neillers of three-hundred Devonshire. I've been part of Waterloo Police Department since two thousand sixteen. I'm here to express my concern. As a citizen, would advise you not to make cuts to public safety. I'll make this short, as I've already sent all of you emails with my major concerns. The last time City Council decided to cut police was in two thousand fourteen. There was a good amount of backlash from the community at the time of this decision. One of the council members who voted for this was one current council member who is not here today, Steve Schmidt. In a response to the backlash from the community, in a, in a article issued in The Courier on March fourth, two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen, Schmidt was quoted saying, "I don't think the world is gonna come apart, and we're going to turn into, back into tombstone." In two thousand fourteen, that same year they cut the police, Waterloo had the highest number of homicides in the past twenty years. Fast forward to January first, two thousand seventeen, which the police department is at its current functioning staff. Officers were on patrol in the seven-hundred block of Logan Avenue and got caught in crossfire between two groups of subjects shooting across the street. A total of fifty-four rounds were fired, striking cars, houses, and businesses. I'm not exactly sure how much more tombstone-like you can get. These incidents are happening with our current manpower. Making any cut to the police force would amplify these types of incidents and put our safety at risk, just as it did in two thousand fourteen, when they decided to cut only three police officers. My second point I would like to note is that Waterloo, is that Waterloo is the only city out of its comparable size and tax base that is considering to cut police this fiscal year. Cities such as Dubuque, Council Bluffs, Sioux City, and Ankeny, who I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, are also using the backfill money, are adding positions or maintaining their staffing on their police departments. I've dedicated my career to protect the community of Waterloo, which is why I'm here today. The proposal to cut any public safety in Waterloo is a threat to Waterloo's current safety. I ask that you make adjustments to the budget that would prevent making such drastic cuts to the police force and to the fire department. Thank you.
I'm gonna remind folks, just, we're trying to keep names out of it, although it is public record, but we can keep it, remain to the council, to the councilmen, that'll be fine. Mr. Mr. Sir, could you state your name and an address for the record?
My name is Sam Neal. I live at five-fourteen King Bard, here in Waterloo. I'm thinking back, thirty years ago, I was invited by a group of businessmen to run for city council. Why did I make the right decision? I'm glad I didn't, I don't have the personality. But my comment is, I don't envy you guys having to make a decision. But I also, at the same time, remember the eighties, I was offered a job in Rockford, Illinois. I went there, and it was virtually a ghost town. The schools were falling apart, the property tax was just unbelievably high. And they couldn't get anybody to come into that town. They couldn't, they couldn't fill a position they were offering me tons of money for because of the community. So I get concerned about that. I know for a fact that we have Engine Works, we have expansion of PEC, we've got the, I'll date myself, the Northeast site because of our property taxes. And, and, and the fact that we had a great job force. I wanna see that, I wanna see that to continue. You know, the answer is really simple to solve all these problems. Just get, just get more, bigger town, more property, more things to tax, and we got the problem solved. But somehow, we gotta get the people here, and the businesses here. So I don't know, I've heard good proposals. I don't know which one I would go for, 'cause I haven't studied them in the detail. I think that everything we do, whether we raise fees or whatever we do, has a cause and effect. If you raise a fee for, okay, I'm gonna put in concrete probably this summer. And if I get a building permit, and that building permit comes up, it's gonna cost me more. Working from the heart, I know that, I talked to people that didn't have work on their homes because they couldn't afford the fee for the inspections. So I know that everything has cause and effect, and how you balance this out is your problem. I'm glad it's not mine, but I know you'll do what's best for the community. And don't worry about getting re-elected. You do the right thing, you get re-elected.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I've noticed, since I've lived here, that when your property values go down, the taxes go up. When the property values go up, the taxes go down. So the government, the city, the state. So the government, the city, the state never loses any money. In fact, most of the time, they, they get a little bit more. So we're talking about a balance here that really is a mute point. The other thing that was, that bothers me is that we keep talking about reducing the, or increasing the revenue, but we never talk about reducing the expenses of the city. It's been talked about for some time that we have too many department heads and we could reduce those department heads. I think I mentioned this at the last council meeting, or maybe the last, on Thursday night, that if you got rid of a certain number of department heads, reducing the department heads, you could save a half million dollars in a snap of the finger. Keep looking at that. It's been promised for two years at least. We talk about TIF with the shovel-ready jobs. But yet, instead of making that site that's already in our possession shovel-ready, we go buy more property. And I know some of it's under contract, but some of it was proposed to buy something that we didn't own. But that money could have gone toward making that site that we own shovel-ready. Let's do that because these contractors or these people that want to come here are looking for a shovel-ready job. That means sewer, water, the whole thing is already there and all they have to do is connect to it and develop their site. So let's do that. And we keep talking about the tax, the state backfill. That's this pocket. This is fee pocket, this is city tax pocket. Franchise fee or whatever, a fee is a tax. A state backfill is a tax because if they don't, if they backfill us, they're going to raise my taxes on the state level. It's a catch-22 situation. So quit talking about state backfill and just live on the money that you get now like we have to at home. Thank you.
Forrest Still of 1725 Huntington Road. I've been coming here a lot of years. I still learn things. I can't remember them all, but I can learn. I've heard a lot about fees. Fees affect me tremendously. One of the council people mentioned that we haven't raised fees in years. I tell you what, the landlords had a 500% increase about three years ago. 500%. Now you're talking about possibly raising that again. Renters, you talk about the household will only have a few dollars. Renters don't get a break on taxes. If we have a big rollback in taxes, that doesn't help a renter. Nobody's going to lower their rent. But the fees they've got to pay on their heating bill and gas bill that they can't afford is going to hit them. And maybe a couple dollars to, some people, is nothing, but a couple dollars to some of them is. This is the middle of the month. One of my renters has paid $200 so far this month, and I'm working with them. They, I pay their heat bill because they didn't have enough money to pay their heat bill one time, so I started picking it up. And I pay it and they pay me in installments. They will get close by the end of the month to having things paid, but they won't have it. Franchise fee, that's what hits them, that franchise fee. County, like one of the council people mentioned. We pay that many, many times. We pay the county, we pay the school, we pay the church, we pay the nonprofits. That's another way that, you know, it may only be $1 on my house, but all of these other dollars count up too. They all add up. It was mentioned that we have $289 million worth of TIF properties. $289 million worth of property is not paying anything towards the police and fire. I keep hearing this increment. Increment is a very small thing because that is froze once they do that. If you've got a property 50 years ago, it's froze at the rate 50 years ago. I would like to have my taxes froze at the rate they were. My house is just about that old. You know, and it's just getting money out of the same people all the time. It just gets overburdening. We, we need to economize. We need to get someone in here to tell us how we can run this city cheaper. We pay more taxes than most cities. We don't have that much more of anything than any other city. Somehow, there's a leak in the boat. And I don't know where the money's going, nor do you, or you would stop it. But it's going someplace, and that's why we are in the position we are in. Thank you kindly.
I will be here 30 seconds. Vicki Bearden, 2303 West Fourth. I agree with everything that's been said about the public safety, fire, and the police, et cetera. But I also want to add a comment to the quality of life issues. If we don't have a library that's accredited, perhaps I don't use the library every week or every month, but there's a lot of people that live in Waterloo that do. And I think that the quality of life, you can bring all the people you want to, and if there's nothing for them to do, that's another side to consider. Thanks.
Todd Obedall, 124 Amity Drive. Appreciate all the discussion tonight and the opportunity to speak on this issue. Reviewing the data that was handed out last week in regards to the tax rates since 2001. I see that our levy rate, residential levy rate is up 7.7% since 2001. Same for the commercial tax rate. The rollback rate is actually 1.4% greater now than it was in 2001. So we talk about it's decreased, and that's putting us into this crisis situation. It's actually greater than it was in 2001. Property values have increased 52.2% since 2001. So we have an increase of 9.2% in residential assessments on assets that are 52% greater than they were in 2001. Yet, we're told we don't have enough money. Question is, are we taxed too much? Are we taxed too little? Are we spending too much? Sure, the, with the rollbacks for the commercial properties, using that same calculation, down about 3.1%. We're looking at about 5% real money as far as real terms, constant terms. 52% increase in property value is quite significant. Yet, we have to find some way to do razzle-dazzle accounting to balance the budgets. I have friends that are very strong budget hawks that are involved in the city. I separate myself from them on the public safety issue, and that is a point of interesting discussion sometimes. But I believe that public safety is the critical number-one responsibility of the city of Waterloo. I respect the officer that came up here and cited the other cities. I would like to point out that Ankeny is actually lowering its levy rate by 90 cents this year and hiring 20 and a half more people, including three police officers. I would love to have more police officers on staff. I'd love to have 200 police officers and 200 firefighters. A town this size can't support that. I would like to see the city of Waterloo get on a path where it is increasing its population, increasing its tax base, where we are bringing people here, people are deciding it makes good financial sense on the whole. Sure, everybody has their individual decision-making points as to why they choose to move to a certain location. But when we look at the aggregate, we are losing out to our neighbors. And we must look at things realistically. We must accept the reality that it's not just the perception that's going on, that everybody is making a decision that's different from what we made in order to live here. We need to make Waterloo attractive. And part of that, a big part of that, is getting our financial house in order. And to continue down this line of raising up the temperature on the frog in the frying pan, just a little increment here and an increment here. 18 years down the road, just like where we were in 2001, we wind up with a whole lot more money and still being broke. This needs to change. I ask this council to show fiscal responsibility and change the tide that this city is going. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloverdale. I sort of hesitated about coming up here, but I think what's coming back to bite us in the backside is the TIF districts. We've got way too many different districts. We've got them in South Waterloo, we've got them North Waterloo, we've got them West Waterloo, we've got them to the East Waterloo and in-between. I like Mr. Anderson, but I don't like some of the things that he's doing. He's giving away the store.
Please, do not. Everybody has been cordial, whether we disagreed or not. Do not, do not point out Mr. Anderson and talk to him like that.
I said I liked him.
You said you liked him, and then you proceeded. So you patted him on the back, now you finna punch him. So I'm just saying, Mr. Nathan, we have a decent rapport. I'm not, not tonight.
It's coming, it's coming back to bite us in the backside. We've given 18 and 20 years tax abatement to people, and we're not seeing the money coming back into the city, offer to help pay for the city's services and so forth. Until we get away from that 18 and 20-year abatement, and we cut that back down maybe for five or 10 years, we're going to have problems financially. And that's what is happening here today. Is you're sitting here debating, we hear the same thing year after year. People coming up here, don't lay our police off, don't lay our fire ones off, and I agree with them. There's other ways that you can do this. We've got to let some of these TIF districts, at least one or two of them expire so that the money from them start coming into the city and, not only the city, but also the county and also to the Hawkeye Community Colleges and places like that. So that we can sit here and be comfortable and lower our taxes down to a rate that we can afford. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nathan.
My name is Dan Kelly, 255 Kinnellworth Road. I agree the police and fire need to stay at their current funding. In the paper Sunday, there was a proposal closing a swimming pool. And you're talking about quality of life and 70,000 people here. You want people to come here. We have one swimming pool for 70,000 people. Cedar Falls has a brand-new aquatic center. La Porte City, they have pools. Why would they build here if there's only one pool? It just seems like a waste to have an empty hole sitting there. I'm not talking about levies or anything else, just why would you want to close a pool? That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. And that was a suggestions on possibilities. So it wasn't something that the council finalized. Right, absolutely, absolutely. But that was just a couple of suggestions for us to consider.
Hi, Mayor. Councilman Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I agree with what the gentleman said earlier about we need to bring more businesses, more homes here, more people here. I don't know, but I've been taking a ride around the city and going down Ridgeway where they've got new construction. How many empty buildings are still empty there? Go over to the Kmart area, look at how many buildings are still empty there. And I'll start out going University towards Cedar Falls and start looking at all the vacant buildings we're getting around here. That really bothers me. We got, I think it was 282 people at the Hy-Vee out there, I believe it was. I mean, they're going to move them around, but somebody's got to go. You know, it's just fact, you know? And both the fire department, police department. I was sitting out on my, whatever you call it, retaining wall one night, 2:00 in the morning, and watched them fight a fire over on corner of Birch and Bayer, and they done one heck of a job. I mean, they did a good job over there. They really did. And I got, show them respect. I think, I think I called the chief the next day, said they really did a good job over there. The thing that's getting most of the people in Waterloo is the cost of living. And all the cost of living is going up. I don't know if you've been in the grocery store lately, but it's going up. My wife and I got to figure it out. She eats on Monday, I eat on Tuesday. We got that problem figured out, so. But I just, I'm just concerned about all the buildings we're getting around here. Empty, people were losing. You know, something's got to be done because we're, we are building. Look out behind Home Depot. I took a ride up there one night, and I can't believe it. And I know some people up there that saying when their taxes do finally kick in, they're leaving. So that's it, Mayor.
You've got a minute left. All right. I will just, and it was said in good spirit, but I did chuckle about the food thing. But there are folks that actually do have to make those decisions, so I didn't want to take it lightly.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Tonight's been sort of different. I agree with everybody up here. I agree with everybody that's talked tonight in their own way. Everybody's got a great ideas, but here's the problem as I see it. I've been coming up here, same as Forrest. Forrest got me coming into the city, and he got me coming up to these meetings. Ever since I can remember coming to these council meetings and setting in the budgets, we've always said, "We're going to do something next year," or "We're going to get a hold of stuff." So here's what I think. We've kicked the can down the road for several years. We don't want to deal with it this year. Maybe we better, maybe we'll have to wait and deal with it next year. But it costs us somewhere around a million and a half, $2 million if we spent nothing more than to pay the additional raises and insurance and help and whatnot. Every year, it's going to be probably $2 million because of our employees. So we're behind eight ball before we even get started. And then we add all these other things like road construction that may not be necessary. This year, we can delay or buy this piece of property or buy this equipment when we can maybe stretch it out until it breaks and then maybe spend it or something. I realize that I'm a big man on maintenance and stuff. But we do not, someplace down the road, we're going to have to deal with this. And I hear it every year. I hear it, you know, businesses don't operate. I'm going to wait till next year until I'm clear out of money, you know, and then try to go down and borrow some more. And that's what we're doing. We're borrowing money out of our savings account, and each year, it goes down a little bit. We spend a little more. So I'm thinking that eventually, we're going to run out of money. You know, we're already bonded pretty awful heavy-duty, I think. And, you know, everybody can frown and make faces or whatnot, whether it's a go-bond or a regular bond. It costs us $2.99 roughly out of the $17 and something projected for debt service now. Figure that out. That's a pretty good percentage. So we keep buying, we keep spending, so how are we going to pay it back? You know, our citizens. I don't know where you, how we count. We've got a roughly, my guess is 38,000 houses with about 68,000 people. So them 38,000 people are the ones that are paying the property tax. So I don't know how to fix it, but I do know one thing. If we continue to spend like we're doing, we'll have to let somebody else worry about it, you know? When they cleaned out the road down here and put the new highway in, we lost about 20-some businesses. None of them stayed except for one that I know about, and that was moved over here to University Avenue. So I don't know. You know, you guys got a tough job. But sooner or later, somebody's going to have to stand up and hold their ground a little bit, and we're going to have to figure out how to keep from going broke. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yvonne Belch, 527 East Park Avenue. Everyone's made some really good points, and to an extent, I mean, I, you know, I agree with everyone that's spoken so far. I just don't, I just don't think that moving our city forward, the way to do that and make it more attractive for people to live, to do that is not to cut back and to, you know, to cut back on taxes. Nobody in this room likes to pay taxes, okay? I mean, but I also understand that, that those tax dollars go to services that myself and other people in the community need. I mean, we need police officers, we need firefighters, we want our libraries, we need things to do, we want our museums. So, and I've also, I've talked to people that have recently, friends of mine that have moved to other communities in the surrounding areas. You know, why did you decide to move to a different, to a neighboring community? And it's never about, well, you know, the taxes in Waterloo are just too darn high. It's not about that. It's just there are certain communities maybe in the area that they perceive to be nicer or to be, you know, just a better place to live, or maybe they think the schools are better there or what have you. So we need to identify those things. We need to identify what other people, what people are deeming as things that other communities are bringing forth to the table. And we, those are the things that we need to work on. Cutting, cutting taxes is not the way to do that. We, as a matter of fact, we should be, we should be maybe increasing them a little bit and ensuring that we can keep the services that we have and maybe adding service, other services that some people Doc mentioned earlier that would make it more desirable to live in Waterloo. So. Doc mentioned earlier that would make it more desirable to live in Waterloo. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. I just want to just say really quickly, sometimes we take it for granted, the opportunity that folks have to get up and make presentations to the council. I've heard, you know, conversations about transparency where there's some cities that you can't even get up and talk unless you sign a list and say exactly what you're going to, going to talk about. I will address the financial accounting part because we have really, literally, every council member has literally went line by line for, through all of the information. We have placed that information for you to be able to see it online. We provided that information. So I do want to address that, the portion about financial accounting. I think that the challenge we have, there's some varying opinions from our council. And I'm not saying all are wrong, I'm not saying all are right, but there's varying opinions on how to get there. But, you know, I, I have to, to say that as well. And then just also with regards to our debt service. Yeah, we compare other cities on where we're strong at and not where we're strong at. But when you take a look at the ten largest cities in the state and the fact that some of the various cities that we talk about or compare to are way in more debt seriousness than we are. So just want to say that. So we're done with public comment. I would, I would ask the council if we can take like a ten-to-fifteen-minute break right now.
Motion to recess for fifteen minutes.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Yes, sir.
Motion to reconvene?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to recess again for fifteen more minutes.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. All right. We are back, I think. Did someone open up the meeting again?
Make a motion to resume the meeting?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting is reconvened. Right. We are, we are here. Any proposals out there?
We have a motion on the table.
Oh, we have a motion on the table for all the original, original. So. To vote on that one?
Yeah. I didn't hear what she said.
She said.
Can we make a motion to take that off the table?
You can vote it down, or you can table it.
Yeah, take it off the table first. Wasn't it table?
It was never, it was never table. Do you have a motion and a second on the budget proposal that's on the agenda? So it either has to be voted on or...
The one that was on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, not last Thursday?
Correct.
What was on the agenda?
So.
And which one was that?
So what is council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be prudent to allow us to table or to reconvene tomorrow at noon when Mr. Schmidt has a chance to be here and voice his opinion on it. I know he has some family issues right now. So I think, I think that's important, that seventh member is allowed to debate on the issue.
All right. That requires a majority, so.
I would move to adjourn until one PM, or till noon tomorrow.
Second.
Well, do we, we have to vote on this before we go, right? Because we already have the meeting.
What you could do is you could make a motion to lay it on the table and pick it back up at the meeting at noon tomorrow.
I would move then to lay it on the table until noon tomorrow.
Second.
All right. Motion to lay on the table till noon tomorrow.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Other than Mr. Schmidt being here, what else do you think we'd accomplish by waiting till tomorrow?
I think there might need to be a little bit more deliberation, possibly.
It's up to council to decide if you want to.
If we don't have four votes on laying it on the table, then we're, we're still here.
We'll still be here.
And that's the reason I'm asking, what do you think we would get accomplished by waiting till tomorrow?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure we get it right, and I don't see how letting it rest in our minds and our consciences would be harmful until noon tomorrow.
All right. So there's a, a motion to lay on the table till tomorrow. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Marcy?
No.
All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.